And my microphone was not on. It's not a Monday night at seven, so everything's a little off. Okay, so now we are on to approving the minutes from last session. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes from our last regular meeting.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. Can we just do a voice vote on this? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That passes. Next is the Kent ISD Resolution. Every year, there are, Kent ISD has a board that is made up, and people have to run for that, but their elections are held by local boards voting for those people. It's not an open general election. So there are three people that are running. And so what we need to do is we need to both nominate somebody to go and be the person who elects them at their meeting, which is on June 5th, same day as ours. I think it's in the afternoon though, isn't it? Yeah. So we have to send somebody, they're a representative, to go and do that, as well as who we would like to vote for. So do I have anybody that would be interested in going over and being our representative?
What time is it available? Do you know?
I would have to look, but I want to say it's 4:30.
Okay.
I know typically.
It's quick. I did it last year, yeah.
Yeah.
Would you be interested in doing it again this year?
The way I knew that was coming. Yeah, I can do it. So it's 4:30 on the 5th?
I'm on the time with you.
Okay, yeah, I can plan on doing that.
Thank you. That is awesome. And then there are three people that are running. They each provided us a statement. Typically, Dan gives us a little bit of information because he sometimes knows these people, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure. We, you know, we don't necessarily know these people, but perhaps he's had some more interaction with them. We've got Wendy Faub. We have Andrea Hadle, who is the current president of the ISD. And also Anne Hamming. Wendy Faub used to be on the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education, and she works for the Literacy Center. She's the director of the Literacy Center of West Michigan. And Anne Hamming used to be, or no, she is still currently on the Thorn Apple Kellogg Board. And I checked to see like what the rules are in terms of like, should you have people that are on boards or not on boards? And apparently the rule for the ISD is that you can have no more than three people that are currently serving on a local board. And there are two others that are already on boards, David Drake and Laura Featherston. So if we were to elect Anne Hamming, that would be okay. We would still be within the three, like, so they've apparently, you know, made sure that they're, they don't have too many nominees to mess that up.
Wait, hold on, say that again. I think both of these two are currently on boards.
No. No, which one?
Well, I thought Anne Hamming still has her picture on the Thorn Apple Kellogg.
Anne Hamming is on Thorn Apple Kellogg, yes.
Right.
The other two are not on local.
The other one is on the ISD board.
That's right, Andrea.
You're right, right, yeah.
Andrea used to be on East, and the other one used to be on Grand Rapids Public Schools.
And who's the one that's currently on the ISD board, Andrea?
Currently is Andrea. She is the president of the ISD board.
Okay.
And what's Wendy again?
Wendy is, she used to be on the Grand Rapids Public Schools. And she is the director of the Literacy Center of West Michigan.
So what Kristin is saying is there are already two people on the KISD board, so we really cannot vote. We could just, we could vote for Anne and one other.
We can vote.
Or any combination, okay?
We can vote for any combination of the two.
Just wanted to make sure, okay.
Do, does anybody here have any experience with any of the candidates?
No.
No.
We're voting for two people or one?
We're voting for two people.
Oh, okay.
I don't remember voting for two last year.
There's two spots.
There's two spots open.
There's two spots open.
Okay.
Okay.
There's six here spots. Typically, the superintendent is here, and he tends to have a little bit more information about them. I think he would only have information about Andrea since she's currently on the board. And I haven't heard him say anything negative about her, like, I think that I'm. Yeah.
We do, yeah.
Yes, we all have the letters.
She has those, yeah.
And I mean, I, I personally, you know, having now been in a presidency that was suddenly vacated, I, I appreciate the consistency of a president. So I would suggest that Andrea Hadle, since we've not heard anything bad, I assume all things are there for good, that we would go with her. And then of the other two, I mean, unless people have a strong preference, I mean, I kind of like the idea of having a third person who is a current board member, because they're a little bit more in touch than, I think, with what's going on in the local district, so maybe have a third person, you know, up to their max of three that fills that spot. So that would be my suggestion, but I'm up for discussion.
Wendy, is that what it is?
Wendy is, yes.
Nope.
I thought Wendy was the first board president.
Andrea is board president.
But wait, let me ask my question.
Yes.
So Wendy is not on any board right now, even though she worked for the Literacy Center.
Correct.
But she served for a long time as president on the Grand Rapids Board.
That's right.
She has the experience, just not the current.
Right. And Anne Hamming is on her 11th year on the Thorn Apple Kellogg Board of Education.
I, I like to have, I'm, I'm one for fresh blood and new ideas. Like, sometimes when you have the same, you know, on there and stuff, I think sometimes it's just bringing somebody in fresh, having new ideas, so it's not the same piece of machinery, keep going and stuff, it's just, I, that's just my personal preference, yeah.
Well, Wendy and Anne both would be new.
Well, Anne. Right, yeah.
Wendy both would be. So only Andrea is currently on the KISD board?
Yeah. Anne's on the Thorn Apple Kellogg.
Yeah.
And Wendy used to be in the Grand Rapids Public Schools.
No, all three of the letters were, you know, glowing from them as individuals. It's hard to, without knowing them, it's difficult to rule it down, or you can make objective guesses at things. I mean, the Literacy Center is an enticing thing to have for our district, or for, for our county, and with emphasis on literature now in the last couple of years. But does that supersede any of the characteristics of anyone else? I couldn't objectively say.
Do you have any thoughts, Mary?
I agree with Holly. I did notice in Wendy's that she said I would be filling a position that has already been vacated by a Grand Rapids person, and I'm the old one at the table that always wanted to make sure we watched out for our urban center. But to what extent we aren't all already aware of that throughout the whole county, it could be neither your hand or there, depending on how you look at it.
Right. I think somebody that's on the board is from like the Godwin Heights area, and trying to remember where the others are from. I can't recall off the top of my head. I just remember Godwin Heights was one. So Anne and Wendy? So it's, yeah, I, I mean, I would recommend Andrea, just because she's the current serving president.
With Wendy?
And then either Wendy or Anne. I was suggesting Anne because she's a, she's currently on a board. And so my, my thought was currently on a board has her pulse more in touch with what's going on in the local districts already. But the other one is the Literacy Center, so
that's what, that's what I'm leaning is towards Anne and Wendy. That's just personally for me, because I feel like we're getting both of the knowledge of coming in off of a board in a school, right? So she's kept her pulse on probably the last six years of what's been going on.
She's, she's been off of the Grand Rapids Public School Board for at least a couple of years.
But then, but then with Wendy, the literacy piece is kind of, that's, it's appealing, so, but.
And actually, goes no surprise, I like the idea of keeping some consistency too, so not fighting Holly, but I also would support having Andrea and one new person, so.
Right. Okay, so let's say we're, we're good on Andrea, and then it's just a matter of.
I would say Andrea and then one other, and then a new person.
Either Andrea and then either Wendy or Anne. So one is Literacy Center, one is current Thorn Apple Kellogg Board.
So if we're going to keep Andrea, if we're going to vote for Andrea, who has the board experience? I would then lean towards, oh, I was going to say Wendy.
I would lean towards Wendy myself. Literacy Center and, to Mary's point, a pulse in the history on the, our neatest kids in Kent County probably is, would be a plus in my book. Somebody who does GRPS for a long time, understands GRPS well, that's a centerpiece of Kent County education.
Okay. Everybody good with that then? So Wendy?
It doesn't matter if I'm good with it or not.
All right. Andrea.
I mean, it's not going to have to be an annus.
Right. So I'm going to make a motion that we elect.
I thought you liked Wendy, though.
I, yeah, but I would prefer Anne over Andrea.
Oh, I see.
I mean, I think the combination is, I think, with the dynamics that we've been through the last whatever, I think that, I just think the dynamics bring something fresh to the plate. You've got experience in something, and you're bringing something fresh to the plate.
I see.
Okay.
I mean, there's other board members though, that have been consistent, right? It's not just, just the president's been consistent. There's other board members that are, are consistent.
Right.
Correct. So it's not like if she leaves, then, then there's nobody to help out, right? Sorry.
My mic on. That's nobody to help out. Y'all hear me? But, I mean, that, that would just be my preference on it, but.
Okay. Yeah, I, I personally prefer having, you know, I, I think she's probably been doing a good job. Dan would have let us know early on if he had gotten some of these names and went, oh, yeah, they're, they're, they're having a hard time, they're not, they're not working, they're not working and playing well with others, or whatever. We didn't get, get that from him, so I would like, I, I would recommend giving Andrea the benefit of the doubt and staying with that consistency in the presidency spot. So, could, do I have a motion then to, as to who we would like to recommend?
I move that we submit our vote for Andrea Hadle and Wendy Faub.
Do I have a second?
And I also move, and there's a surprise in this motion, that we ask Maggie to continue as our representative, and one of you two to be the alternate if Maggie can't go. Holly, are you up for that? It would be only if Maggie can't go.
Yeah, I wrote it down, Maggie.
Awesome.
I mean, barring some emergency, I do go.
Thank you.
I would have a lot of flip-flop in the view.
It's very rote, it's very, it's very easy.
Monday's a good day for me to.
And the meeting is at six. It's literally, you walk in, vote, and then come to our meeting.
Walk in, vote, and then come to our meeting.
Oh, okay.
So for sake of clarity, I move that Maggie serve as our representative, Holly will be our alternate, and that we vote for Andrea Hadle and Wendy Faub to serve on the KISD board.
Can we separate those two things, please? Because if I'm voting to do that for her, that's a separate issue then.
Okay. Yeah, I move that Maggie serve as our representative, and Holly serve as our alternate.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
And I also move that we submit our vote for Andrea Hadle and Wendy Faub to serve on the KISD board.
I would second that as well.
Okay. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Then we are good with those items. Thank you, everybody. Next, we are going to, and look at this timing, move on to our superintendent search firms. The first one is M A S B. They will be presenting via Zoom, so Val will get them all teed up here for us. They're going to be up there.
Are they going to see us as well?
Ben and Greg. Greg Chesputowski, meet the Forest Hills Board. It's a crazy, crazy time of year in public education, as you know, so we had a couple of us then put in here. But starting from over there, CJ, Holly, Board President Kristin Fossen, CJ's treasurer, I'm sorry. Maggie is our secretary, and Mary Fusti. Thank you for tolerating our last minute change rounds. We are very blessed that we do not have to do this search thing, but for every 17 to 20 years. So it was important for us to slow the trains on a bit, and I know you were all committed to be here and hang out with us in person on my tent, so I am so grateful to you for being flexible and squishing us in with everything you already had on the calendar today, so we can get to know you a little better. So we're hoping you can go ahead. We love your proposal. Everybody did a beautiful job. We know we are in good hands. And we're hoping you can just kind of wow us a little bit, and tell us why we should be partners going forward. So can I go ahead and let you run with it?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks again for inviting me to be with you today. Apologies, I'm in southeast Michigan helping Clintondale Community Schools with their interviews yesterday and today. So I just couldn't physically be there with you, and hopefully the, hopefully video is good enough for today. Do I have the ability to share my screen? Did I get permission?
That's what we're looking at.
We are looking at that right now, Greg.
Okay.
You're sharing. It's.
It's. Hang on. Yeah, he should.
He should, yeah.
Here we go. Okay. Yep.
All right. Yeah.
Perfect.
All right, folks. Well, again, thanks for the invite today. Wanted to just quickly walk through our process for you and give you a chance to ask any questions you had about it. I know you have the proposal. I know you have my resume. I am Greg Chesputowski. I'm the Director of Leadership Development and Executive Search Services for M A S B. I've been with M A S B for four years now, in July. Prior to my work at M A S B, I was a K-12 educator for nine years, athletic director, variety of roles in K-12 around the state, in some different districts. Then I went to community college, oversaw all online programming at Curtland Community College, and then went into human resources work, doing leadership development and hiring with Mid-Michigan College in Harrison and Mount Pleasant. So one of the things that I think really does make our, our service difference than the other folks that you'll be talking to is really who our organization, who our organization is. I mean, we exist only to serve boards of education. We only have the goal of you folks having a great outcome and creating good educational outcomes for kids. You know, you'll have unparalleled support of a tremendous staff of, you know, my entire office. We've got 28 people on staff. We've got two lawyers on staff. We've got a full communications team. We've done more searches than anybody in the state of Michigan. We've been at this a long time. We do have national network and promotion ability. We have good connections around the nation with our new applicant tracking platform. It's called Revelus. So all of the states' associations that do search work like us, there's a number of them that also use the same application. So when, for instance, your posting goes live on our application system, it's automatically posted in front of 15 other states through other associations like my, like ourselves, that are doing the same work. So it's automatically going in front of their candidates as well, with no extra cost to you. That's just part of our system. We also have really good relationships across the hall in our office building. We, we shared the building with the Superintendent's Association, so we're really connected there. We have lots of access to information from them, who they're talking to, who's in their leadership, their superintendent academies, what candidates are really looking, who's reaching out and saying they're looking for their next opportunity. So we have really good lines of communication there, and it helps in vetting candidates as well when we get to that place. But also, we have a high degree of transparency in our process. We, we really highly, highly, highly discourage anything happening behind closed doors in a search. We, we encourage the board to handle all deliberation, all discussions in an open meeting. Obviously, the only exceptions to that would be very, very slim, and those would be in terms of if you had an internal candidate, and there was something about a performance evaluation that needed to be discussed, something like that. There's a very slim spot where a closed session might be necessary. But other than that, our, the entire process with us would take place in a public meeting, you know, in the public eye, where everybody can see what's going on. Like I said, we're, we're only here to serve you. We're definitely making, we definitely want to make sure that you have a long-term candidate at the end of your process, because we know that in as little as two years, we, there is research that shows that consistency in that superintendent in that leadership position increases student achievement. And so we know that a long-term superintendent is key. Clearly, you're having, you've had an experience with the superintendent for a very long time, and would probably like to repeat that if possible. So that's definitely going to be the goal. Obviously, we have no obligation to place candidates. We're not trying to place people who went through any training with us, or who are connected to us in any way. And we don't have a stable of people we're trying to place or anything like that. And then we're always mindful of public perception, making sure that the board is, is viewed in the best light possible. Again, that the process is transparent. Everybody is clear about what's happening at every step of the process. We make sure that there's no surprises. The decision is ultimately yours, is the board, and we want to give you as much information as possible. But we will definitely make sure that you are not stepping on any landmines or anything like that. So if we find it, you will know it. And if there is something that happens to be found that we didn't find, we'll definitely vet it out and make sure that you have all the information you need to know, if it's actually something to be concerned about, about a candidate or not. And then we also have a satisfaction guarantee on the quality of the pool. So if for any reason the, the pool came in at, when your posting closed and you were unhappy with the quality or the number of candidates in your pool, we would, we would redo the search for you. We would repost and go through the process again. We also guarantee that your candidate that you ultimately select will stay a minimum of one year. And if they, for whatever reason, they depart from your district, or you ask them to depart from your district, we will come back in and do the search again for free. And then the other promise we make is that we will not actively recruit away your superintendent that we just helped you place for at least three years. We're not going to be calling your person, trying to place them somewhere else. And so, this is definitely the most important decision you have to make. We know it's a high-stress situation. We know there's lots of people with eyes on your district, candidates, community. I'm sure you've got media attention around this as well. So just making sure that you all have the, all the information and feel prepared going into the process at every step of the way, so that you can present your best foot forward to all of the candidates and to the community. The other thing is, is that as a board, making sure that you're working well together in the public eye is critical, because we know that high-functioning boards tend to have better results in the superintendent search process, because candidates are interviewing you too. Right? I, I mean, they have lots of options right now with all the turnover, all the positions that have opened up. Candidates are interviewing you to, to determine if you're the boss they would like to work for. So being sure that as a board, you're prepared and that you feel comfortable having hard, hard conversations at the board table, disagreeing while, all of those things that need to happen to help someone come in and feel comfortable in that mission. And then obviously, helping you paint a really clear picture of the leader that you want for your district, so that we can place, you know, if you want to say, place in order for what you want in that candidate, and what skills and abilities you really need to help the district move forward. Our process is about 13 weeks, so we can, we can adjust that either way. We try not to get down below 12 weeks. That gets really compressed really fast. And, and even though 12 weeks sounds like a really long time, I really feel like you would feel it was complete, it was very compressed, and there wasn't a lot of time. And the biggest part of that in there is we want to make sure that your posting's up for a good long time, so people have a chance to get their materials around, plenty of time to review it, research the, the district, and then get their application in and have quality applications for you, and obviously give us time to market. So in the first stage of our process, we'll make sure that we establish a timeline for this entire process, start to finish, so everybody can lock the dates in their calendar. Obviously, I, I, I'm guessing if you were to do a summer search, right, that's a challenging time to get a bunch of people together for, for work. So locking those dates down are critical. Making sure that we have a plan for stakeholder engagement in place, who we're going to meet with, how many meetings that I'll have, what specific groups you would like me to meet with, how we're going to do that, how many in person, how many virtual options, those kinds of things. Making sure that you have a compensation study available to you, so that you can make an educated decision on what the compensation range should be. And then publishing a preliminary posting to make sure that that awareness is immediately started. So right at the beginning of the process, we would definitely have a posting go up right away saying Forest Hills is looking for a new superintendent. Here's the preliminary timeline. Here's the salary range. And then the selection criteria will be coming at a later date after the collection of stakeholder input. So one of the other things that we have the benefit of a full communications team. We have some, we have a great digital designer that helps work with us, and we'll take all of your preliminary posting information, any district data, any points of pride, all those things that we can build into a digital brochure that you see there. This is one that we built for Elk Rapids. Stakeholder engagement is critical, and is another point of pride for our process, is the amount of stakeholder input that we build into the process. So we have an online survey. We have multiple languages available to make sure that all the folks in your community are able to participate if they choose. Right now, we have English, Spanish, Arabic. Additional languages can be added. We have a program that can do that for us. We'll do face-to-face focus groups, and then we'll do feedback forms after each round of interviews, so that you can hear your community's perspective on the candidates that you've chosen to interview, and make sure that you're seeing additional perspectives on those candidates and their responses. And a lot of times, my boards find those comments useful, because the, the, the questions that the folks in the audience will have, or that stakeholders in the audience will have, will also help prompt them to develop questions for a second round of interviews. So making sure that there's lots of chances for folks to let you know what they're thinking, how they're thinking about the candidates, and so that you always feel like you have as much information as possible to make a good decision at the end of the process. As far as recruitment, we'll do in-state marketing through the MyStaff platform. It's basically where everybody in the state of Michigan looks for jobs. Our Revelus application platform, I told you about already, how that goes out nationwide to multiple other states. We can absolutely do as many other national publications as you choose, taking recommendations from board members, community members, anybody who feels like, hey, there's a person that we really feel would be a great candidate for the board to consider. I'll take those names and go out and recruit those people as best I can and try and get them in your pool for you. We also have all the folks around the, the nation that do the same work that we do. We are in a group called the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers. So we are able to, when the applications come in from out of state, I'm able to reach out to my counterpart in Texas and say, hey, Butch, I have a candidate, his name is actually Butch. You know, we have a candidate from Texas. Have you had this candidate in any of your pools? You know, what, what was your impression of this candidate? Are there any red flags? Those kinds of things. So we have lots of connections and lots of different ways to help you recruit, either in the state or nationally, if you choose. We'll make sure that we vet all your folks, like I was just saying about making phone calls around quietly, to make sure that there are no red flags, no landmines, nothing that you need to be aware of. Making sure that they match, the candidates match your selection criteria. We'll have phone calls with the candidates, and then making any discreet inquiries that we need to. And then making sure that I'm talking with my other consultants as well, because we do a number of searches around the state, and I've got a, I've got a whole team of folks that are doing this work, so they may have seen other candidates that are applying for your search in, in a different search. So getting other information that way to help develop a, a good tier for your pool, so that you can evaluate those folks when they come in. In the interview selection process, so I'll guide you through the selection process and that discussion. Making sure that you have all the information. You receive all the applicant information. We don't hide anything from you. Every single completed application that comes in, you will see all of the information. I'm not going to just present you with 10 people that I think are the best for Forest Hills, right? I'm not going to just present you with ten people that I think are the best for Forest Hills, right? I'm not going to do that. Uh, you will see everything. I will provide you a tier that I will screen and say, these are the top. Ten to fifteen folks that I felt matched the selection criteria that you identified on paper and based on my research. These are the folks that I thought you would find most interesting and most closely matched what you were looking for. Um, but you will get a full list, you will get all the material, nothing will be hidden from you that way. So in in the process, we do need to be careful about uh candidate confidentiality until they accept an interview. So uh until candidates accept that first round interview, we're going to make sure that we discuss candidate candidates by uh randomly assigned number. Um, and not by their name or by their district. So um. And then we'll make sure that in first round interviews, nobody's making reference check calls yet. Uh, we'll save those between. First and second round. Like I said before, transparency, all the interviews will be held in an open session. We will recommend, like, I I've got a whole bank of questions uh to help you get started. I'll provide you with a draft of what an interview guide could look like. But it's absolutely your interview guide and you can either throw all my questions out and create all of your own, edit them. What however you see fit uh to get at the information you're really, really concerned about with the candidates. Um, in our first round, all candidates receive the first quite and the same questions. And we'll have the same amount of time with the board. Uh, we keep it really tight and rigid in the first round. So that you have no candidates that have additional time with you. Uh, no candidates that got questions that another candidate didn't get an opportunity to respond to. So we are going to stick very, very strictly to the script. Um, and I will monitor time. I will communicate with the board president throughout the meeting to make sure. That they know how much time a candidate has left. Um, I'll work with the candidates so they know that that how much time they have and that they need to manage their own time. Um, but really want a level playing field in the first round. So making sure that everybody has the same opportunity with the board. Uh, in the second round, this is where the variety and questions come in. We want to make sure that you have the chance to ask any question. Uh, that you feel would help you make a good decision. So no stone left unturned here. We'll also have an opportunity typically for candidates to do a presentation at this point. So if there is a prompt that is important to you or something's a little more um. Common would be, what would your ninety day entry plan look like? Tell us about how you would get to know the folks in our district. That's sort of a prompt. That they would have a chance to prepare, present to you um and and show you how they can handle themselves creating a presentation in a prepared way. Uh, the uh, so again. Audience members will have the opportunity to provide written feedback to the board. Before any deliberation starts, we'll make sure that you get all of that and have time to read that feedback and all of that is built into the process. Uh, at the decision point, uh. I'll help the board go through that deliberation and conversation, getting to the point where you are prepared to begin negotiations. Uh, typically at this point, two board members would meet with the candidate to work out the uh contract. And then I would be at a following meeting, the uh once terms are agreed upon, the formal board would uh adopt that contract. And then our support doesn't end. We are your association. We're here to help, right? Even if you don't go with us, we're here to help. Right? We're always available to assist you, support you uh in 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 this work. So. Uh, but if you do choose us, we do uh, we do include a follow-up workshop on roles, goals and responsibilities. Uh, setting up those initial communication expectations. So everybody's on the same page. You've had a superintendent for a very long time. I know you do have some new board members with you as well, but. It's very easy to overlook things that your former superintendent just did. Right? And and expect the new person to just do them without clearly communicating them. Um, so making sure that they understand what what your expectations are, setting up those communication channels. Making sure that that conversation is had so they can start off on a really good foot and you can create a really good leadership team between you and the superintendent. We'll also send an area representative around. Uh, we have an area rep program where all are, we have retired superintendents that go around and visit all the new superintendents in the state, whether we did the search or not. Um, they'll just come by and be a listening ear, offer some advice, see if we can offer any support to them or to the board. Uh, and just be available to them as a resource. And then if you were to do a, if you use our evaluation tool. And were to do a facilitated evaluation, we would definitely give you a price break on that. So hopefully that gives you a little more than what you had on the PowerPoint. I. Uh, a little more depth to what was there, but I I'd be happy to answer any questions that you folks have.
Thank you very much, Greg. I appreciated your uh. Very thorough presentation. That was great. Um. I do believe we have a few questions that we wanted to ask. Um. There is a a little set list here of some questions that we have. And so I'll just sort of start out with a couple with one of them here is. Um, you know, you talked to quite a bit about, uh, you know, how. Working together and things like that. How how does that communication with you take place? Um, the. Is it phone calls back and forth? Is it emails? What kind of turnaround time can we expect? Like if we. Send over a question to you, like how long would it take to hear that? Things like that.
Sure. So you all will have um multiple ways to get in touch with me. Um. Email, text, you'll have my office phone, you'll have my personal phone. Um, I I try to get back to my people as soon as I possibly can. Um, sometimes if somebody hits me, he sends me an email at ten thirty at night. You may not get a response till the first thing the next morning, right? But I mean, if I see that you call and I'm in a meeting, I'm going to turn around and I'm going to call you right back. If I could text you right back, I will. Um, there there really is not good, like you would never expect from me a even twenty-four hour delay in a response. Um, you know, if I had a really busy day. Like if you email me at eight AM, you may not hear from me till I can get out of meetings at like four thirty or five. But it's going to be within that day, like there's not going to be a delay.
Perfect. Thank you. And a quick question, you talked about um Revolus and. You have fifteen other states via that app that will see a posting that is that accurate?
Yes, I believe it's fifteen that are using it now.
Okay, so in the event that um. You receive information or an application from somebody who is from out of the state. Just wondering if you could explain a little bit how you would acclimate that candidate or what you would tell that candidate about Forest Hills. And the community and the schools that we have, um, how do you give them a really good picture of who we are?
Yeah, so I mean. The the beautiful thing about our stakeholder input sessions is I'll be meeting with your administration. Your teaching staff, your hourly staff, your community folks. And and really part of what I use those sessions for is recruitment. Because they are telling me your story. So my conversations with candidates, whether in-state or out-of-state are going to be. Here's her, here is who Forest Hills is. Right? They're in the top, what what are you in the top five percent in the state and ac- and your academics? Right? You've you've got a number of buildings. It's a large system, nine thousand students. Right? We've got the majority of our districts in our state, the large majority of districts in our state are twenty-five hundred students or less. So it's a tremendous opportunity when a district of your size is available. Right? So telling them those types of things, making sure that that they know. That you're right next door to Grand Rapids. So there's a metropolitan center right there. Uh, as far as lifestyle, anything like that, if that's something that they're looking for. Um, making sure that they know that you're financially sound as a district. Um, all of those things are going to be critically important to to them as well, you know, I I mean, even if you just peruse your website, letting them know like. Hey, clearly this is a district that's invested in mental health. Right? They they highlighted on their website, they create access for students and kids. So all of those things that we can tell candidates, all of those things that I can learn. Uh, that would show how you care for kids and how you set up kids for success are the things that I would be telling candidates, whether they're in-state or out-of-state. Um, and then of course, trying to find other information from your stakeholders that I can enhance that story with and and then I'm also going to tell them. Okay. We, nobody believes that everything is sunshine and rainbows everywhere. These are the things that are facing the superintendent. That comes into this position in the next three to five years. These are the challenges that are facing the district. So maybe it's the next, maybe your challenge is uh a goal to increase. Uh, test scores for a particular population. Maybe your goal, eh, maybe one of your things is that you have a strategic plan on the horizon that needs to be executed and developed and. And you need someone to lead you through a strategic plan process. Or maybe you have contract negotiations around the corner. So so making sure that they come into the position. With all the great information that I can tell them about you, but also letting them know like, okay, here's real, when you get boots on the ground, this is really what you. What is going to be expected? Here's what's coming up. Here's the challenges that that this district is looking for leadership to help them get through. Um, so so that's kind of how my conversations go with candidates. Um, is that helpful, I hope?
Yes, thank you.
I I the the timeline that you laid out makes a lot of sense and I know it is kind of in response to the. The general timeline that we proposed, you know, to you and our fee. I was wondering what your thoughts are. I mean, a lot of searches in the state of Michigan. Between uh, I don't know if it's accelerates, but a typical. Search program where we try to have somebody in place by August, September. Versus a more lengthy process that involves an interim, that involves slowing down, that involves. Young protracted steps and looking over the course of three or six or more months. Thoughts on pros and cons?
Yeah, so um. First, first of all, if if your goal was to get someone in in August. I don't think you would be rushing if you got started right away. Um, I I don't think you'd be rushing. Um, cons, uh, some, some, some pros with that. The process can stay the same. Some challenges with that that I could see is that um you may have challenges getting stakeholders to engage in the summer. Right? Folks are out of the buildings. They're not here working, right? Like you can't catch them during the day, right after the workday, that sort of thing. Lots of people have vacations, like, so stakeholder input might be a challenge. Um, that that's one thing. I mean, obviously we have virtual. Options will will, we would make that available. We'll have a survey online. We'll make that available. But again, it's just that summertime that. Gets challenging to engage with folks when we've done this in in other districts in the summer. Um, typically, we haven't seen a lot of summer searches and then last year we had nine. So it is not uncommon to do a summer search. Um, getting someone in place for the beginning of the school year, you know. That that's pretty valuable. Um, being able to start off the new year with with a leader you're going to have going forward is pretty great. Um, now, if you wanted to slow down and think about doing a fall search. Right? No problem with that. If you have an interim that in mind or or you interview for an interim with some folks, we have names that we can help you with. Um, you know, M A S A keeps a list of interim superintendents. If that's something you wanted to do or continue with. That path for a little bit longer and give this a chance. It give, give your community awareness around this, a chance to settle in and get people's heads around the process. And slow down, that's that's totally fine too. The cons with that would be. I I would expect a district of your size. Um, and of your standing, really, you know, academically and all the achievements that you have. Um, and then that you're going to be looking for an ex- inexperienced superintendent would be the hope. Right? It's not the guarantee, but that that would be the hope. Um, you're also going to be looking for someone who has all the character traits that you want, the skills and experiences. And that person may not be the person that's willing to leave their district in January. Um, so that's kind of the rub with that. So I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm not saying you shouldn't do it. But you're asking me for pros and cons and and that is just one that I see. As you know, being a barrier as opposed to someone that could interview in the summer and start August or. You know, start in August with you, as opposed to somebody's trying to start January one.
That's it. Yeah, thank you.
So continuing on that a little bit. We talked about August, we talked about January. What about July first, twenty twenty-four? No preference either way, but is a person of special superintendent likely to leave their district in late July also?
Oh.
In the next district, you know, so let's. How they go forward in the next four years?
Yeah, so so if you were in a position where you felt comfortable. That you could get through the next year and you were in good hands and the district was swimming along. And and you want to do a spring search with a July one start? I mean, that that's ideal because you, all of your administrators are going to be finishing, all their contracts end July, uh, June thirty. Right? So they could finish their school year. Uh, they can wrap that up. They're also going to feel good at by, uh, they would feel as good as they can. About leaving at that time because then it gives their district all summer to replace them. Right? So so there's lots, there's good positives there. Plus it gives your superintendent a summer to ramp up and get acclimated to the district before kids come back. Before staff all come back, all of those things get. And I mean, if there's relocation, all of that summertime, I mean, that lands really, really well. Um, so I mean, absolutely something you can do, but but that's good, I would say the. The concern there is just making sure that you feel like you have a really good plan uh to get you to that point, to get you to June thirty.
So your list, you provided them to us, that is helping quite a bit. Do you play any perks in the placement of the inner? In our business? Or simply let us have a list of who you you're aware of and let us, you know, do the interviewing and do the diligence and kind of that.
Yeah, so I mean, we would absolutely provide you names re, you know, and help you in that way that we can. Um, you know, we we have conversations with districts all the time. They're trying to figure out. How do we pay an interim? How do we work this out? You know, we we have those conversations to help people think things through. If you would like this to have a little more hands-on. You know, helping you maybe interview interims or something like that. Like, if you went with our service. I would absolutely do that. You know, so but I mean, I mean, we're, we're here to help, right? If you have questions, we'll help you.
Right. Greg, probably to war, I'm sure I'm on the camera. I don't know, I can't see. Sitting in CBA section here, so um really quite what. Your batting average of fines versus years that a superintendent, I don't know if you know those stats. Like when you guys find a superintendent, like what would the average? That makes sense?
Yeah, yeah, I I think I know what you're saying. I I don't know that I can give you the exact batting average. I do appreciate a baseball reference, but um, you know, typically, typically what we're seeing now. On average, for all superintendents is about three to seven years. Right? And I think I I I would guess if we put all of our stuff together, we would probably be right in that. Um, four to six year range is where our folks are in general. You've, we also shared the list of folks that left early. So I mean, in full transparency, you have that. Um, so you've seen those times where it didn't work out.
The reason I'm asking is I know you have um part of your packages that you would go after. Uh, for recruitment for up to three years. Um, for our new um person that would come in and is that number of years negotiable at all? Like if we find somebody who's, we don't want anybody, you know, but trading teams. For say, that that we would, you know, like if you're saying right now it's a three to seven year, I mean, is there, is that portion negotiable? Um, in that, in that, in our contract with you, um, with that, if we wanted to add another year or two instead of. Men's app then.
Yeah, I I think I think we could definitely work that out. The other thing that you have to keep in mind too is this is. That sort of stuff is um. You are a large enough district. There are su- it whoever comes to you, there are so few places for them to go that would be an upward step. Um, and and if you think about. Um, and, and if you think about our state, the largest. I mean, almost all the large districts have just put in a new superintendent. Right? You think about Wald Lake, brand new superintendent. Lansing, brand new superintendent, Kalamazoo, brand new superintendent. Right? Wayne Risa, brand new superintendent, Washington, they've got a, I think they've got a succession plan going on. So even the large ISDs have turned over recently. So I don't even know that you would have anybody competing for. That you, that your superintendent would wanna go compete in a, in a search for them. Um, that would be even attractive enough to pull them away. But as far as your question, absolutely, we can work that out. Cause clearly, we want you to have a good, a, a good long run with your superintendent, whoever you select.
And then one more question, I know it's kind of an odd man out, but. Um, I've been reading a lot of past. Um, superintendent searches in the last five, seven to eight years, and. If there's like a glitch in something and they realize that they needed to part ways with the firm. You know, or the, the person that they're doing the search with. For whatever reason, you know, I've, I've read a variety, and I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but I'm, I'm, you know, playing out hypothetical. What would that look like as far as, um, money's spent? Um, you know, and, and, I mean, I know you have, I love that, that the guarantee. Of, of what you've shown us on the PowerPoint is awesome. I'm just wondering, you know, if we ran into anything. That was like, we need to part ways in the middle, we need to find somebody else. What does that look like with the, the, the monies spent with the monies that we owe to you? And the contract that we have, like, what would that look like?
Yeah, I think it would just depend on where we were at in the process. Um, hopefully that is not something we would have to worry about, but. Uh, but basically, what would happen is we'd look at where we're at in the stage of the process, you know, and. And we would sever the contract at that point, right? So it'd probably be. As, as simple as settling up on expenses, and then, you know, if it was the first half of the search. You know, we'd cut the fee in to that point, cover expenses, we part ways and wish you well, right? Again, hopefully, we don't have to do that, but if, if there was a place where you were some, for some reason, so upset with our service. We would absolutely not sit there and say, you signed on the line, we want the full amount. Right? Like, well, that's, that's, as your association, we would not do that, so.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we've got a couple of minutes, so, um, just a couple other. I know we only have a few minutes, so, um. While there are sort of more open-ended questions, so I'll ask you to try to be a little concise. Um, the, I guess the first one is, what do you find is the biggest challenge that you come across when you are conducting a superintendent search? And what have you learned from those challenges to overcome whatever that thing is that it might be?
Yeah, I, I think the, one of the biggest challenges we have, um, in search is. No search is the same. I mean, you can have two districts that on paper, even regionally, look exactly the same. Nothing's ever the same in a search, right? Community members are different. Uh, district, uh, issues are different. All of those things are very challenging, and when, when you have all of the input from all of the stakeholders. Sometimes you don't even know how involved folks are going to be. Um, and then the pressure that can put on the board. So making sure, I, I think one of the biggest challenges is making sure that the board is available, accessible. And gets all the community feedback. Uh, but helping the board process that information. In a way that helps them make a decision rather than just feel pressured into doing something. Or feeling attacked or something like that. So, so I think the biggest challenge is making sure that all those stakeholders feel heard. Uh, that the information is getting to you, but that it's processed in a way by the board, uh, that, that is helpful. And is informative and is going to help you make a good decision in the end. Um, that's probably one of the biggest things that we have found. Consistently is that with community dynamics and, and, and culture, things that are going on in different districts and figuring that out. And trying to navigate that, as someone coming in from the outside. Um, and then helping the board navigate it in, in, in a positive way, in, in a very public, in a very public way.
Right, thank you.
Did I ask one more, too, um, concisely, if, if it's possible? I'm, I'm curious about. A, a failure essentially in the search process that you guys experienced, particularly one where you've installed somebody. You thought it was a good fit, board thought it was a good fit, and then less than a year later, they're back at the drawing board. What, what went wrong? What was missed? You know, what did you learn from that?
Yeah, so, um. We did have a situation like that happen a little more recently. Um, I, I think ultimately, there were a couple of things that went wrong. Um, we had a very new consultant on the search. Um, that made some choices that somebody, that I probably wouldn't have made, nothing wrong. But just things that someone that was more experienced wouldn't have done and would have helped guide the board. Uh, a little bit more in, uh, through the process than what they did. Ultimately, what we ended up doing is I, that, they, they did end up separating. I ended up going back in and, and redoing the search for them, uh, to follow up on that.
Just wondering if you could explain a little bit, you talked, um, you talked quite a bit about how you engage the community, the surveys that you do. The face-to-face meetings that you do. Wondering if you could describe how you synthesize all of that information for the board? How does that presented to the board in a way that is meaningful, and that kind of drives the next step?
Yeah, so what that'll end up looking like for you is the survey information, I'll, will, will all come back. And then I will combine that information with the narrative and the stories that I hear from the stakeholder input sessions and the information and data I get from them. I'll present that to you, uh, in a presentation, PowerPoint presentation, so you'll have all the slides, all the hard data, you'll have all of that. Um, and then what I will do from that is basically take the stakeholder input and create a draft. Um, of, of a potential selection criteria based on that input. Uh, so you can actually, you'll not only see all of the hard data. You'll hear from me about the conversations that I've had, the stories that your folks have told me, what they believe is important. Uh, but then you'll also see what it could look like in a selection criteria to see that all of that data applied. And then that's for you folks to edit at that point and decide what stays, what goes, what needs to change a little bit.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
If you could describe in one word, your team's best quality that they would bring.
Uh, I wanna make sure I heard that right. My, my team's best quality that we bring to the search. One word.
Well, our button, I don't care.
I, I, I would say trustworthy.
I'm good. I just wanna thank you, Greg, because when we realized our superintendent was preparing, this was the first spring, right? You were our first of all, and you, you know, especially you decided to know that, again, this will work. You, if you need help, simply as an educational supporter or a search supporter. And you were the first person to mention it was in our, and that really made us realize there's many different ways to do this, and we're very grateful for your flexibility. And working with us now and giving our name and just helping us get our track all the way around, so thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I know you have other folks coming in, so, uh, just, again, seriously, it, regardless of what direction you go. We are here to support you, want you to have a good result, so if we can help, let us know. Okay, have a great day.
Can't tell all this.
Absolutely.
Um, some of the things that we do, um, besides superintendent services, we do a lot of consulting and school, there's a lot of student planning, there's a lot of association. Monitoring of business services, executive coaching and so forth. We offer to develop anything other than the board's education and superintendent's. Uh, and I'm gonna go through some of these quickly because they were in our proposal, I don't, uh, bore you with details because we want to surface behind her. Uh, again, we are twenty-five years old this year, uh, so we've only been doing services for. N L I was created, Dr. Smith created it since Dr. Hill, uh, Michael Beaumont took over. We have done over, um, four hundred and ninety-six, four third, I think it was. Over four, we now have a number of searches we've done. We also operate, uh, between, uh, school academies, so we prepare superintendents. Um, that wanna look into taking this on and endeavor a lifelong job and so forth. I can tell you that one of the criticisms to be perfect on, but N L I will always hire you. That is absolutely true. First of all, we don't hire anybody. We help you guys with the decision, and we will give you all the information and facts that we never told you. But we have no decision, um, that's why we're full boxes. That's why we take seven of you, that's why we give a big box. There is a force to be, for, uh, and that, I never want to. Um, why initiative in the group, um, we'll see another slide two collectively, we have over a hundred thirty years of superintendent experience in our group. We do rely on each other quite a bit. If we were chosen to do the first four kills. We would immediately lay back on to all of our colleagues. Exactly what we wanted, so we don't sit back and wait until we come to ours. And, uh, we've been involved with this type of discipline, so I'm sure this is, that we understand that. But I, I would have a tough, you know, that there's a certain example, that's okay, that we will be watching out. But I've also had, um, um. The city Shelby later, that is essential, so, uh, a lot of diversity in my background, but he has the same thing. Uh, one, why us, we just believe, um. In our logos, as far as developing deployments of forty leaders, we believe leadership matters, that we go through these, uh, purposes. We, um, hopefully are taking care of ourselves financially, but we're not religious and we have a lot of clients of, of the school business. As I do know, you know, Hester's been pretty good to you guys in the last few years, that's funny, is when you dry up a little bit. We know there are limited budgets, so we try to, try to be reasonable, and it's the way that we can get back into better. Um, talked about that a little bit, we developed our three leaders, we talked about the three hundred people that have gone through the school academy so far. Um, we do a lot of executive coaching at all levels, not just the superintendent, but you're gonna say the position. Again, we improve and consult with people, we are in contact and communication with board education members. And you will have access to us twenty-four seven, if you're hurt, you want to question answers. We want this process to be as easy as possible for the seven board members. We realize you don't do this on the elevation, that's not your forte. It's a decision, and that's okay, we've got two or three top-notch candidates that you're all interested in. So be it, it's our job, but we want the process to be easy for you to follow along. And our process, if we include the process with the community staff, or if it is not. We are very strange, yeah, everything we do, and we get into that a little bit more and more. Um, we go guarantee it, we touch the search, we are here until the appropriate person is found. Now, we talked about how we're hoping that this is the school that's free. We will do the background check, we will do the reference check, we will have that all, so we're ready to push the contacts that we have. However, we do not tell you what they're like, yes, yes, we're stupid. And again, if you're going into this, it's a little bit different, that's where seven of you are concerned. Offer one good mind, uh, when people can show a rat, actually, with the. Um, we stay active in, um, our organization, through the, not only the commissioning association. Of superintendents in the national association as well, while our name is out there, most outside candidates. We should, that is, the national search, we should, especially when we're outside, looking at four kills. Um, they know where to go on this, and that's. Firstly, every search I've done, between us, we've done all of the first searches, uh, in the last year. Timeline to the higher, time setting. We recommend you not actually looking into relying on searches, like we've been, sometimes we're kind of hoping for any one. We've tried it with fair well, for how it's, it allows them to acclimate, it allows them to not have to be worried. This is quite a critical development, or even the very next year, this is the one that's, um, that you may. Um. Again, we've talked a little bit about you, and you do understand, Troy, and you do understand the whole meaning that are our jobs. All of us, not at least, going to jump to the numbers, come, yeah, we don't look good in that color. And, uh, we don't want to be wearing those, there is only. Um, there is only one time to this entire process, that you will be able to go with the whole sector. That is that you do. So all other decisions have to be made, you have to make over the steps. It's a deal up, but it will monitor that as you go through that, will help you with the entire process. And you can only go with the whole sector with candidates and for candidates. And we have that on application, that doesn't start that by, sometimes we get people from out of state that won't be one of those. How to change that, making a lot of this, or like, check no, instead of that, so they're four hundred. We will call the people that claim the rule of law to them, okay? And so it's not under application, we have to become a female or a faculty, or a wife, they will. And forty-five searches I've done individually, I've spent one hundred percent of those. on that, so that's a long night, and we have a, it's not delivery, it's really, uh, collection, so, we'll, we'll keep seeing the right vote, but that's about it. Um, the network, again, a hundred and thirty years, over a hundred and thirty years of experience within our organization, again, we have people throughout the state, in western Michigan, we have a two of us, we've got, and we've got a, um, several, we have, um, contemporary, that graduated, graduated, some graduates are down too, they're a long time, I've carried other candidates, um, through the weather, whether all out of there, I've, uh, we're all, so, that's, yeah, questions on our team as well. So, we, we utilize our team, that is, we go through this, um, our marketing strategies, we do use social media, uh, Facebook and so forth, because you never know how that word's gonna get around. Um, you're gonna be in a good position, because, uh, we're really, you know, they research times, and we submit the calendar for August first, with a new or furry, but if you're looking at that later, uh, timeline, fall, the kind of time, it's up to start a stage, and September, uh, on the, uh, there's, and they're on there, a lot of time, they have their, they, a lot of, a lot of, uh, uh, people, uh, to do, to do, uh, I don't think, um, we, one less, we're, uh, we're, uh, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, okay? Our guarantee, again, you will have somebody in place for me, we are on the job until we find the right person. So, even though, let's say we had a August first start date, you know that's not gonna work, let's say there's a team, you know that for first, that's for first, that doesn't work, but we, we will, the life first, we're still here, our team, they, we would have them, uh, okay, we're here, and so, uh, please understand, the guarantee of wanting to appoint somebody, uh, we're gonna be here, uh, supporting that person, this person here, it's been worth for them, because they've been on the streets, because they need that, always have to do a call, six months, that's us, you know, whatever, no, you, come up, and you live in a, that's the case, the first year, that person, but, uh, we understand that guarantee, if you're, if you're struggling, you, so forth, but if that's possible, we definitely have that, uh, you're savvy out there, uh, you're gentlemen, uh, of that person, or, uh, for taking that person, possible, uh, so, 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 these searches, we have done, purchased, um, just finished down in the region, thirty-five thousand gifts, I've also done six, how many do you know of six firsts? I did, oh, two hundred and seventy-eight gifts, and that's everywhere, so, we have handled a wide variety of school visits, very successful school visits, some very talented, very excellent board of education to work with, some challenges, or, part of our challenge, if, so, is trying to get this board to a seven or eight vote, to vote for something, people can turn down the odds, but they're, um, they're, you know, and if you're reading the ceiling, or if you're sitting at the table, you know it's just gonna buy you, you're on it, uh, uh, odd, or however, you may, if that's, like, if you were anybody else, with the help of our gifters, we, uh, we will help you work through those things, but we need a full bridge of our, um, searches, the back of our proposal, and we can add room to those, you know, so, and a lot of high quality visits that we have scheduled. Um, so, the proposal, the planning stage, and so forth, as we go through this, if you wanna, not go down through this, you need to understand, except for our kind of, it's like, so, but we are not necessarily following that calendar, it's a close, it's a, it's just not, you know, obviously, and then, you're doing the other line, the other, the other, the other, sorry, we have, we expect it to be considerable amount, I said, that time, we, 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 we're, 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 clearly the most important step, is the, uh, the, 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 that word, okay, when it comes to voting, the division, look, it's, for our, some of these, the idea that they like to, uh, literally, uh, already, well, I've, we're, we're, we're lacking in weight, of the voting, frankly, we're fully handed, the board, we're not, I think, we're, and we've done, and probably a handful of, like, candidates come around today, and, 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 we get into the process, we're gonna work to do it, and it's all along the way, we're working with the board, so that, when it's on time, we do that, we, 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 probably, we, 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 we may end up with some, some kind of a, they did, under the business of, or, we just , uh, we're, we're, uh, we, 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 we're not, we're, 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 for example, in the application process, we no longer need brothers or brothers, having these children, the reason, to give her a bad one, okay, and it's really not a right contest for a third party, to choose who you're going to get, we know, we can call our contacts around the state, and we will ask some tough questions, because we wanna know the good and the bad, and the not so good, and what are the controversies, because we're a red flag, and, uh, we need a hundred and ten, but, and we will, we will, we will, we will, we will, um, full report, fully transparent, on the, uh, we, 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 we spend a heck of a lot of time talking, college, or, state, we spend a heck of a lot of time on the phone, and we talk about, in case, but we also, we'll, we'll, we'll have, uh, we, 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 so, we, 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 we're talking about, um, covering that, of course, look, if the elementary central, we're, 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 we know, we're just going on, and how we, we go, there's, um, uh, second, that's, 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 they have, they know how to, they, 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 in interviews, as we set those up, uh, we will help, quite a few of the employees, who have been through a time yet, uh, for the first round of search, they will get every candidate, question, that's how, they do not, because we can write any questions, from what they've talked about, or, okay, and we'll walk through all of the questions, and they're there, and we do, uh, we, 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 right, how we do, and what's, like, and not be a question, if they're, 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 um, this is an optional, um, open, and we follow the movement, so, just, uh, through personality, leadership, uh, place, with your use of your final candidates, or, that we, 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 not all of this is used, um, if you can, some of these, more have not, so there is possibility, and, that you're, if, 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 if,[1367.12] Um, we do, uh, boards give them kind of, like, making a workshop, governing, such practices, after the person is hired, and then, uh, two or three months after they're hired, come in, say, oh, hey, what question, what, what, um, game, the goal, and the responsibility, uh, at the second time. Yeah, and you wanna make sure that one goes well, and then, we're gonna, we're here for a year, again, uh, uh, for, and all they have to do is follow, they, uh, have a question, uh, for that. Both of them, I think, they're helping more cousins, and, uh, here, we will say, well, we're strongly in this, uh, to, 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 uh, we're gonna help, we want to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh. You don't wanna be a gift, right? But you have a gift, and then, it's only two years, and all right, second year, that is not a very, very, uh. Um, sample first timeline, uh, yeah, we had a different sample in our proposal. We would come in, and setting goals, stage, and ask, to, 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 seven of you, you need to involve with every step of the way, and go through the, uh, with all the units, you get the selection, and, uh, uh, and, uh, so forth. Some of the other information we shared via, um, email, and we gather, so you don't have to think a lot of stuff to me, but the meeting, we do set, through, so that all of you get a line, and now, with, for example, you just set three nights per interview, uh, both of you, you're gonna do two, four, six, a little bit more. So we can, uh, media, so that there's some, uh, people, and, uh, we'll, we'll take every word, but, uh, say, we're gonna do four, or, uh, we need to go nine, you have a three-night interview, so, so, if I keep, you're three up, and I, if I have line, and I'm, uh, uh, I wanna make sure we have those, uh, we still have, uh, uh, uh. Um, especially, you have a team of, uh, two thousand, five, it's really, uh, anything, and we have a hundred dudes, uh, nine, uh, fourteen, uh, fourteen hundred, uh, one of the best, uh, personnel, we've got, uh, 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 uh.
And this community, we need to hear all the time. And then we have the rest of it. We'll have deadlines on that and one set up. We'll have the district, uh, we'll get into the back end, get some people to sort of execute and kind of be there for stuff. So you will get all these for a week yet. We're not gonna hide things from most of us, open and share them. All of them.
Would you say, how about in the place, do you have a survey that you do members today here on West Side? Or they have too many different groups?
No, no, the focus groups are people with different things to do, uh, constantly, constantly. Uh, we'll add cases to the eventually, eventually, through, 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 whatever. You will set those down, and yeah, two, and you can use that staff, so forth. Then you will develop, and you will get questions through that they're being put in on the form after you've got a really clearly marked review or whatever. If all the public survey is over from Monday A M, D A M until Friday E F four P M, please go ahead and give them a moment. There's three questions in there, you can answer that, and have a few, any questions. So if you're, if you're, if you're looking for the most responsible, most, you know, focus groups, you know, and then they have other focus groups, please, uh, if you have a faculty, um, or, uh, that is what I'm asking you. Yeah, you always write in your notes, you know, some of those, or, 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 yeah. And somebody may ask that, but I believe, we can always go to the best side, because we can, we can, we can, so we still get it.
Also, was there any time to post your focus groups, when you all finished your, what, in September, or how, how do you track them?
I usually have done it, um, very slowly, and, uh, just keep the process going, uh, very, very much by, uh, what we recommend is to care, to obey, and, 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 uh, we, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, you take, we want to spend, uh, yeah, there's like, uh, these are all along the, you know, uh, wherever you wanna start, wherever you wanna finish, boom, 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 boom. Line them up. So, Zach, have you done this, um, that, 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 or, or, yeah, I, I don't think you wanna wait until September, because you look at a January start date, you have a previous deadline, and I can't probably do it by November first.
That's right.
Those are getting close.
No, we go for it, man.
Hey, you made it to all of them. You can do whatever you think in front of the audience if you want. I'm the guy who makes people talk.
That's right.
So, do it your own way.
Well, that's true, and we're doing it, and we're just trying to make sure that I wanted to have someone who was like, hey, you're not, you're not, you're not perfect, you know, and that's what I'm trying to do.
I'm, I'm, let me think so. As a seventy seven year old, that's how I'm working. A hundred and I'm like, oh, yeah.
I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna tell you now. I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you.
Yeah, that's like, hold it there.
I'm like, you want to do a white hat, that's nice, right? You got it, you got it, too. Tell us all this time, you said.
Oh, yeah.
And then the two larger ones being Annapolis and Columbus, Ohio. Uh, because of their nature of sculpting, because they were very, very typical of capital cities. They have, they have all the white ones, all the white ones shining on these two. The challenges are around three different topics from there. One is when you have an interim, then the challenges are like just a couple of things. And it was really because the internal candidates. Um, men is very challenging and wouldn't, they're not just elected and then still contribute into the generation of support. Which actually caused their first choice to withdraw. They think, goodness, they got a really good one. Uh, but there is those challenges that, and this is based more about how do you deal with internal candidates within the system? The second challenge is in Broward County, which I think, read something about it, heard about it. The six largest districts in America, two hundred and sixty thousand students. We did the search, the Florida just like me was all of them. Uh, we totally make sure that it's only a challenge. Uh, but in Broward, it was all this over town of the arguments with governors. Which they led to about the demapping against the governor. One suit, the governor had a rule for that two years ago, where he can unseat local elected people. Well, he let it along to allow and, and actually, like, the car rate was moving along too fine. And he unseated four of the seven workers in the government. But it's challenging, um, that it's, it's something that, uh, politics, politics, politics. And not a lot of experience with children, so. And last thing I would say, Brown Rock, Texas, Chicago, Austin, that was split board. It was, it was that end. Thank goodness this is not a state. And it's very split because of the issues, of the segments, got thirty-one thousand, no, forty-nine thousand. And what the segment is closer to Austin is for progressives and the segment that is away from Austin is for conservatives. And it's three points that is the board. Uh, so those, those are real challenges. Kind of speaks to who's kind of private because they're, they're just so working, but hard. So I just wanted to address those questions right at the beginning, and, you know, not, not get away. Alright, so that's just three of us, and the only thing I'll add is I've been, this is about some years, and I spent eight years with one of you. As a suburban city school board member of sixteen thousand students. And I spent two periods of the recognition of state board of state, uh, in Ohio. Uh, Kathy is, you know, the vice president, has been home office in Cedar Rapids, she's the hub of the wheel. Uh, Val, like, a military instructor, I think there is a correspondent in there. She, she's the puppet. If it doesn't work with you, then you can do it without, uh, invaluable. And we're blessed, because we have three or five people in our home office. All of whom have, uh, four, six, and nine years. So we're, we're thirty. Now, if you take a look at who we are, and I'll go through this quickly, because I'm a student, yeah, it all. Um, I think the biggest thing, number one, is we're the oldest district in America. And we're typically one of the three largest in Tennessee. Um, we, we take great pride in doing with great content. Forty percent of our associates, and we have fifty plus associates around the country. Um, and they are strategically placed, and they are pretty, obviously, typically in recent, probably section of four, and go with the seven places, they're national associates. Um, and there are also some that are selected not only because of the experience, because we have three, like, women, because they both translate and purpose manage the dwellers there, that's a propensity. And, uh, forty percent are either women and or persons of color. Uh, and there's some intentionality to that. Uh, we place more women and persons of color in the propensity, in the structure of America. Um, but we, but, but we find the right fit, so it's not just that the only ones we look through, but it's definitely one to pass. Uh, we are one of the very few women owned search friends. Um, and the other thing is we enjoy what we believe to be exactly the larger pool of candidates. The only thing I want to add about that is that, is because we have this pool, and I'll give you numbers in a minute. We're not just one of our circle of six thousand friends. Uh, oh, two thirds of the people we place on are in our pool. They come to us for a, for a, yes, you know, I believe it actually wasn't that interesting. Uh, this is, thank, this is, uh, you've seen this, this is by saying that on, um, University Echo and Cleveland. Uh, and that's the way we're in. Um, now we talk about really how we, how we build this, how do, how do we have this, these candidates? Very quickly, we have this registered list that, that, who signed up this year and continue to send and communicate with them, according to you, etc. But this pool is very, very important to us. Um, because we also pool, pull on them, we do surveys of them. So we get some, you know, what are your toughest situations from the last year and a half, things like that. So we want to maintain a sense of currency with those that are used. That's very important to us. Biggest thing we have is, we average, right now, this sector is in over thirty, so we average twenty-eight thousand new users to our website every single month. And that's really what we try to do. Uh, and it's not because of the register, that, that's what's coming all the time. Um, and then, uh, in addition to that, that we have, we have this pool, and I said before, two thirds of, uh, of our patients are not in the pool. The last thing I'll add is that we contribute all of this, these fifteen plus, those who are directly in. Um, they actually have their own contact list. So a lot of the interest, a lot of the applications that gets about, come from them, calling and, and recommending, et cetera. It's the most effective tool that we have, it's better than natural advertising. And then I'll talk about you, this, you're gonna hear this from us, this is your search. And we are, we are your consultants, but more importantly, we want to be your ambassadors. Uh, and, and that you will, you have direct control over, we give you guidance experiences to share with you at times, you say, well, I'm not so sure yet, I might say, or, uh, she'll say. You know, they want to think that's a little different, I'm not so sure, our experience together, but it's still, it's still your search. Uh, the biggest things you deal with are better than look, important, first of all, is, we'll, we'll give you a recommended timeline, it's just another proposal, but the fact of the matter is, it could be your timeline. Um, and we'll try to make it work, we'll give you suggestions, um, what's really hard to cut out, like, if you want to, what's your timeline? Right now, it's pretty accurate. Uh, we have a credit. We can, we can do it, we, we do it all the time, but that takes a credit. Uh, secondly is that you will, you will build, you will, you will approve the characteristics that becomes a profile of candidate you're looking for. We will get that, you do the input, we will get that, you do the survey, et cetera. But it's coming to you, if you can then think, we'll give you the data, we'll give you the data, the structured format. You'll decide eventually, all the factors if you want, you build the profile, and we'll talk about how that profile follows the target. You will conduct the interview, matter of fact, we don't, we don't sit in the room, we don't believe we have a place in the interview room, we don't live. We'll get up to your room, we'll, we'll get out of your room, and we'll talk to you at the big venue, but we don't have a place. And it's important that, like, I didn't want the consultants, I did five searches in sixteen years, so it worked. And then, uh, last thing is you'll decide, we'll give you the data and the comparison, the salary comparison. Uh, real quick, how do we build a profile? We had this survey, it's research days, we work at university, and we, we take a look at it every single summer. Right now, it's thirty-one qualities of, uh, uh, qualities of, and characteristics of, of successful student candidates. Everybody's asked the potential. And you'll have, you can, you can do the survey, you'll have your own section, we have, we do the survey tenants, we do the survey staffs of all levels, we do the survey. You'll get a script, you can go to all of them, who helps first. Uh, and that's where we try to make sure that everybody has an opportunity, even if they can't make a focus group, like, in order to succeed, et cetera. So, but there is this survey that has, that, that anchors the profile book. Secondly, we do, we, we're, we're built virtually, so we're doing this, uh, stakeholder meetings, and we want to make folks true, there are any questions, and by the same question, we're trained and facilitated, this is a real strength of ours. We emphasize that they need to know that the reason these are going on is because the board really sincerely wants it here from you. And secondly, by the time they're done, they'll understand why these questions were asked, and they might not have had this little thing going in, and that they didn't get to talk about at the moment, because that's not what's going on. Uh, and then, uh, then we will individually give interviews to you. We will give you the senior side of the focus groups, the tenant side of the focus groups, we'll give you the senior side of the individual interviews, but authors remain anonymous. There's no individual ever again, so I just think that's important. Our recruitment actually, recruited actively, you know, uh, not, and, and again, I brought up the whole part about our associates, which is great, and, and we'll work with you, but we're gonna recommend there's strongly, you know, national advertising. It was, we have a relationship with all these people, but we'll also say, we also have a relationship with the Michigan people. The Michigan school boards, the pretend associations, students, et cetera. And those will ask you actually, you'll answer that, when you're using it, that your members, if you're like, they're not cutting people in life, we'll give you. But, but you still, because they should affect people in life, with your characteristics. Um, and then, nationwide, our, 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 the only one that will do nationally as part of our opinion is that education is the largest, um, access that's a country. That, that's only the majority of the country, uh, the other one, typically a couple of fifteen hundred dollars more, that's difficult. Then the candidate pool, so when we get the pool together, we internally will screen, let's say, thirty applicants. Forty, uh, well, late in the year, well, hesitant, excited, some forty. Besides the fact, in this district, you won't get forty probably anytime. You may get forty, but there aren't forty, that's not who's gonna arrive. This is the unique district, this, the, the people that can tell that it's not an other district, it's a number district. So, but we'll screen that down, basically, anywhere based on, unless you have tenants and others. We will screen that based on the background information, what we know about the district, what we learn from the profile and so forth. On the other side is that we would use your profile as part of the group, so what you said you wanted, we'd line up instead of you. When we bring these, let's say, ten candidates to you, you can get, you know, the application, the resume, the references, by then, we will, we'll call other references, we will call the candidates for a separate set of questions. Um, and, and we do a smart hire video, which is a one-way video that we'll bring to you, when they have answered three questions, they have ninety seconds to answer the question, they may not see the question before they start answering. There's a clock in the corner, and these candidates always help. This is challenging, uh, but it gives you two things, it's not only, it gives you a sense of the demeanor of the candidates, and it also gives you a quick snapshot in the house that are they on this street. Once, and it'll also pre-lead you at that time, take more of the background check, so by that time, we will look on your social media look, we'll look on your news media investigations, we will do all of those things. So we try to get some of that out of the air right away, when we bring new candidates to you, consider. The last thing you'll get some of through your final is, is that will hide the money at our expense, if you all pay. Those, those are critical, we're not, we're not skilled, that's not our, that's not our job. But the biggest thing you want, you don't have. Um, so anyway, this is part of my, I've actually pretty much covered all this. The, the thing I will tell you is that we will be with you when we bring the candidates. And that's the one, that's the important, the important. Um, and we'll look through all that, and then, um, we will facilitate your decision making after the race. After you, and, facilitated during that, after you have your semifinal decision, after you have finals. And we have this initiative called a matrix, the fourth priority stage, it's not a random system. You literally compare each candidate against all the others, the next one. It'll give you a, it'll come up with a score, but the fact of the matter is that we, that you do that only as a tool, so that most important part of your own, has to be there. Um, why choose us, this, uh, this proposal, these are some things that people think about. So real quickly, do, what I tried to share with you at the up until this point, the oldest part of, actually, our number is now called seventeen hundred, uh, over, completed over seventeen hundred. Uh, and, what, like, school, um, I'm, I'm, I don't think she's too much, we've left out. I, I'd like to say any great experiences with state and national associations, participants. Our, 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 the background check, the videos. The thing that's not up there that I really want to highlight is, we will offer you instant limited, two guarantees. The guarantee is, if the search doesn't work out within two years' time frame, we, for any reason, we expect it to help, that's actually done. We will come to the search for free, with the exception of travel and, and that's that. Um, and the second thing is, we offer you a five-year guarantee. What that is, we won't come and dangle any opportunities, um, you can pick anybody we place, until they have sat there in the five years. Our commitment to sustainability, my destiny is absolutely sincere. And in a place like, in a place like Florida, you're average stay is three, four years nationally. I am in to coming up seventeen, uh, and we'll, we'll try to help, help that, that kind of legacy continue. I will tell you that across the country, over the last seven years, our average stay was to establish seventeen. And it's part of my commitment to sustainability. Or, 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 for my job, I don't want to keep. And so thank you, thank, thank you for taking your time, but now it's taking, it's a real time. Big, and you tried to question.
Thank you for the feedback, I appreciate it, I appreciate it. Um, I guess one question that I have is, that is still not cleared, so I apologize by initiative somehow. Is you are in a proposal, and she is in a proposal, and the person in Iowa, and the home office is this Kathy is in a proposal, and so, who is it that we would be working with? And who, who is it that we would call when we have a question or need something?
We will work primarily with her. And you feel. Thou, whoever, in the, in the, in the, in the, in the, in the, if you're basic correct, et cetera, that contact is, is different. The functionality side of your, of your, of your, well, that's right, you, 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 you're people more at work, but the first thing that you do is.
So just there's a little bit in the bar, I didn't want to interrupt you, but we've been saying that if there's a timeline, we thought, you know, we just, you know, we were doing right first and we could get our speed down. So we might just keep where I thought about it, because there's a timeline, we love that. Mike and I talked a little bit about this on our drive in, and we thought the timeline was abruptly. What we talked about is how valuable and how critically important it is to continue to be in front. The school year is winding down. families, you know, they're on vacation, they're traveling. And it just didn't seem like the ideal time. We would make it work, but it wasn't your comfort level there. My recommendation would be to delay it so that you can get more students, you can get more students, you can get more staff. Because come, I think June eighth is their last day for students, and then staff go on vacation as well. And you want their interest, and you want them to be available for this person. And also for response to online surveys and give persons focus to stay healthy. And so hearing that you're considering moving the timeline to the start of the school year and into the school year. I can cope very well with the board because I think you need to.
Mike? The only thing I'd add, I was just hoping you'd say. Okay, um, because if you didn't, I was gonna say, uh, our job is to offer, uh, I do. Um, and we, I really like to, like it very much, we'd like to get some of this opportunity, unfortunately, but not anyway. Um, because it's just, I just can't say coming soon, and we'll be open. Uh, it's a gamble for a lot. And I'm starting, I'm starting to be willing to do it, trying to do it. Uh, I just really wanna wait until, you know, holidays, I, I just, we, we, we very well, given we got flexibility when I have to start. Uh, I'm starting to the whole process, sort of, you don't always go, you, you go after it, or it's more. So, but you gotta feel, like, you've got to engage staff, you've got to, you know, like, uh, you know, a little bit of that. Uh, I remember that this, uh, so, uh, but, but then you use the false door. Uh, particularly with, you know, the first ten times anywhere you want. But, uh, uh, unless you're necessarily, you know, last time, you know, anywhere you want. If you do it, it's, uh, it's a challenge. You'll be done, uh, during an event, and you'll know the answer. It also gives you a chance to stay amongst, you know, the two days, under the strictest circumstances, and circumstances, which is, uh, just groundbreaking. So our mindset from all along has been, is to start it, and then it's going to be two years of, you know, taking, working, taking, like, um. And I'm very comfortable with it, it will, it will certainly work like that. During a senior year of class, it's, it's, it's what you're looking for, it's what you're looking for. I think, because we, because we, we're better than the challenges we face.
Okay, so just so you know, we haven't seen a nice, if you want, like, any question, you can ask, like, if you want to do that, yeah, here. So we go in the interim, and any comment you'd like, we just make a hard one, and try to get that package, and support that. And the answer is not all that, it's like, it's true, about twenty years of runway, and you see how many different.
You're cool.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in our place, we're blocking, we're taking that, basically, we're blocking it from out of town, and we're taking it housing-wise, and, and bigger. Uh, and I've got a couple things to do, the entire line, et cetera, and, and, uh, otherwise, we can do it, it's, 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 it's directly. We've got plenty of ways on part that everybody knows about, but we look for, uh, et cetera, and such things, but we do all this. And it, and it's rough, it's, it's, uh, we're, we're here, we're, we're here to do this.
Okay. We don't know.
I, I had a question, I, I love the technology of post-CDS, is there the post-CDS app, or if you're, you know, agencies, and surveys, and analyzing, and going into, you know, schools? When it comes down to really down to here, the schools, and top ten as well, so, one concern that I just wanted to think to it, that popped in my mind, is there a little bit of the maintainable, and do you need all that? Every mission, public schools, well different than what the states, I mean, bringing out states, we just require more, as states, you know, to see, and just, and that's obviously not a barrier. But what are the odds that your knowledge, that that seems like kind of a new test, maybe before, they were a few equal candidates? One Michigan native, one not Michigan native, maybe that makes difference to us? Or would we end up with technical issues, all from across the country, you know, at the expense of some really good people, years, because they didn't play? That, and if that makes any sense?
Yeah, sure.
Do you consider that, we started out, not, if you take the whole grid, about forty percent of our posts are coming out. Well, it's general, it's, it's, it's an aggregate. Uh, but the other thing, you're attracting enough, if you're just traditional, a box, yeah. Uh, our job is to pick out units, to deal with, uh, I don't think you get that, it's probably, it's, it's, it's hard to, it's, it's difficult. Um, but I'm not, and, and I don't tell you anymore, it's, um, not our, it's, 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 it's on the, you know, public talent issue. Uh, I won't bear the risk, if there's talent, the talent will be, it's, 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 uh, but, uh, the candidates are gonna know as much about you, as they know about us, and know, and know who you are. So I think this is just really much more drastic in the industry, than, I, I mean, I just think most of it, uh. Uh, there's also, because we do tell us a lot of people, and what I mean is, there's two up here somewhere, and you're doing, so, you know, you're finding the bridge you're gonna be doing, or you're off to do something else. Or the south has families here, and that's, 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 you know, you know, the home, and that's, that's, you know, up in the family, maybe it's a community, uh, because you, you know, really started doing something, uh, okay, a lot. So I, I don't, I don't think we said, I said, we will, we, thanks to all, it's, it's, uh, for, uh, this, 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 uh, we, 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 uh, we go outside. It's, it's, uh, you have a real chance, like, a broader, and, and kind of, set up that.
Can you have a couple questions, when you get on video a little bit, when you do, uh, when you're doing your training, your talent pool, that you're ready to, we're not accomplishing anybody, right? Like, based on what we've been giving you, and you're looking at, you're not seeing a list, it's not given, you know, we, we go over here, we're gonna keep everybody, no matter what, correct?
You have an opportunity to look at it all.
Okay.
We're not, we won't let them.
Right.
I'm gonna tell you right now, this, what we have to do together, is to, 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 to.
But, but they don't have the background, they don't have the qualifications, they don't have skill set, that, and experience, that's good, that's important. So this, 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 yeah, that would not be our recommendation for me to go to that.
But we get a whole, yeah.
Okay, and that was bringing in my second question, have you ever hired anybody who has some educational background, and started off that way? And then went off to run companies, and then another field, and then decided to come back, meaning somebody who runs EDO, that does have great education background, like, you just, you just, you just, of all? Have you ever, have you ever hired that, you know, um?
I've been, I've been, I've been, uh, uh, so, so, too many not, you know, but, but the demand is, 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 you know, getting a, is, 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 it's really hard to get to that.
And I've been a H Y A search consultant for about thirteen years. And also now in my retirement, I advise doctoral students while they're writing their dissertations. I've designed leadership programs to recruit and bring new superintendent leaders into the field, especially those from underrepresented groups. And I do searches. So glad to meet you. Thanks for having us.
Serena.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Serena Shivers and I am your neighbor on the southeast side of the state. I live right outside of Ann Arbor, Michigan. Um, I was a superintendent. Notice I didn't say retired, but I was a superintendent for five years. Um, right outside of Detroit. I currently am the Deputy Executive Director of Michigan Superintendent's Association. Um, all new superintendents in the state work with me for a year. Part of my job is to do professional learning growth and training for new superintendents and also ensuring that new superintendents are successful in their job within the first three years. I also work with all of the superintendents across the state of Michigan on important topics as it relates to um, whatever is happening across the state legislatively, as well as professional development, professional learning growth, school safety, you name it, working with boards of education, those are all the things that I get to do. I also have a presence at the national level, which you'll hear a little, a little bit later. Um, and I, I just thank you all for being here like my colleagues. I do work with students post-secondary, both at Eastern Michigan University and Madonna University. Um, I also do a lot of consulting. I serve on a national board um, related to uh, education. And I have actually been a board member at a time. Um, I guess I'll add one thing that I get to do in my spare time whenever I'm able to find it is I am a Detroit urban ballroom dancer. So that's what I do in my spare time. Thank you for having me this afternoon.
Thank you so much, Serena. And the other two members of our team, Michelle Beeler is my administrative assistant, and then Danielle Mortel is our project manager. H Y A assigns a project manager to each, each of our searches. And so Danielle works from our, our home office. And we'll talk to you about the firm as we go into our presentation. So my goal today is to hit on our points of pride and also talk to you about some of those challenges that are out there um, with a- any superintendent search as well. So uh, with that said, I believe uh, Pat is going to kick it off and tell you a little bit about the firm.
Sure. Um, obviously you can see some of our strong points there, but I'd like to highlight some of the things we are most proud of. We have over thirty-five years in the executive search business. We've done um, many, many searches for school districts and states of all sizes. We have one hundred and thirty-plus um, nationwide associates. So we have a strong footprint across the United States as well as a very strong network of associates that we can reach out to. We have a comprehensive process. We are very, very proud of our engagement process. We have full support of a back office and I T staff, which also helps us with the research and analytics for our process. We are very responsive. We are available to you twenty-four seven. And we have very, very strong partnerships with many organizations that we'll tell you a little bit more about. That slide please.
Just add one more point. So boards ask, what district is less than a hundred kids? Uh, it's a small charter school in Montana. And then the one that's actually over six hundred forty thousand is H Y A did the Los Angeles search last year. So that's Los Angeles, if you're wondering.
We have a strong connection with many professional organizations. First and foremost, A A S A, the School Superintendent's Association. And you will see that I had the good fortune of being um, the third female president of A A S A in the year twenty thirteen. Um, I bring these things up only because it continues to provide a strong network for me and for all of us as we do searches and keep us closely connected with superintendents across the U S. We have a strong relationship with us and also with N A B C. Um, and we are committed to serving, recruiting, and also um, bringing candidates in from underrepresented populations. And we can talk a little bit more about that if you're interested. You'll see that our team has a far-reaching experience in some of these associations. Um, a consultant for A A S A and their learning communities, as well as Mike doing work, as he said, at the national level on the N A S S committee. Next slide, please.
Okay, so again, points of pride, why H Y A? I just want to point out that you can see of all the national search firms, H Y A has the highest volume of searches. And the one thing that we're also proud of, you go to our website, you're gonna see this was as of last week. These numbers change every day, but as of last week, we had twenty-one H Y A-led searches posted. But we also, we post every position. So we also post our competitors' position as well. So there's a twelve, there's a hundred and forty-three other uh, openings posted on our website. So you'll see over a hundred and sixty uh, job openings on our, our website as well. And then when you look at the market, um, we have the lowest um, turnover rate. So the, the people we place tend to stay a long time. And that's, we'll talk about our profile report, how we meet your needs, and that's what we match uh, as we recruit. Um, one of the reasons we have a track, I hope we have a track record of like that. So I've been working for H Y A for over five years. I've led or assisted over twenty-five searches and every, I'm so proud of this. Every one of my people that I have hired is still in there um, serving their role as the current superintendent. And I know one day someone's gonna leave. It's gonna end. The average is about three-point-eight years superintendent. So um, but what we try to do is we do the whole process is we really try to find the right fit for your district.
So I have the benefit, as shared earlier, as being right here in the state of Michigan. And here's a list of past Michigan H Y A searches on the left. On the right is a little bit more about me as an associate. I've already mentioned that I currently work um, at the state's uh, Superintendent's Association. I'm right in the same building with, with M A S B and M A I S A. So I get to work with those association leaders as well. Um, and um, I've been an educator, a leader in the, the state of Michigan for um, almost two decades now, so since two thousand and four. Um, but really what's important here is that because of my current role in the state, I have a footprint across the state in every region of the state and have a really good sense of what are the needs and what are some of the challenges and what are some of the opportunities um, for not only superintendents, but for school districts looking to um, find a superintendent that's a good match for them. So I have to bring that skill set to a part of this process. Um, as you heard Pat talk about earlier of the points of pride, um, we do pride ourselves in having um, led so many successful searches across the country. And when you get um, this slide deck, it will be interactive. So you'll be able to click um, in these areas and read more about the superintendent searches that we have completed. That some of them have references attached them. So you're obviously able to contact them and be able to discuss with them their H Y A experience. Um, and then you can see from two thousand eighteen to present, even though it's really tiny on this screen, I promise when you click on it, you'll be able to see it. You'll be able to see our most recent um, searches. Next slide, please. Um, I, I wanna pause here and just talk about um, the two potential timeline options before we get into a little bit more about what we're hoping to bring to, to this experience for you. Um, there could be an expedited search um, where we have seated a superintendent, selected and seated a superintendent by August fifteenth twenty twenty-three, and I'm gonna come back to that in a second. That's on the left. Another option would be for us to begin the search process in July of twenty twenty-three and have a superintendent selected um, and announced before you all go on winter break. But that person, he or she would not begin um, to their formal position, although we know there'll be some informal activity until July one, twenty twenty-four. These two options um, provide the board with lots of things to consider. Of course, the option on the right would require an interim placement, which we would be willing to um, assist with as well. Um, but more importantly, the um, expedited search provides some potential um, challenges. And um, I, I've had this conversation with, with many school districts that are in the position that you are in now that um, really what you want to cultivate is a list of highly quali- high-quality applicants, not just in their skill and in their ability, but also in their um, character and in their um, moral compass and their uh, personality. And so one of the things that we think about this time of year is who really is out there still searching? And what does that candidate pool look like that is willing to leave their district really right before the school year starts to go to another district? And it's just a challenging time. Um, unless someone is moving from another state and they just happen to be looking to move to Michigan. It's really a challenging time to get high-quality candidates really willing to leave their current district in a lurch and go through a, a public search with the possibility of not getting that position. It's just the season for superintendent searches is not at its optimal level right now. Doesn't mean that it can't be done. Doesn't mean that we would not still bring you a fantastic pool of candidates. It just means that it limits our ability to do as wide and as deep as a search as we possibly can because of the time of year. So we just want the, the board to consider both timelines and the pros and cons of each.
Thanks. I'll pick up there and introduce you to our search process. So how are we gonna help you? How are we actually going to find this superintendent pool for you so that you can hire, you can do the hiring of the best fit for your district? We have a process that includes four sections, if you will. Engagement, where we understand and learn a lot about your district in a variety of ways and learn about the desires of your organization. Our recruitment phase, which will put us to work finding the best and the widest range of candidates to meet your requirements and your specifications. A selection process by which we help facilitate um, at your request, your interviews, the process by which you will be familiar with these candidates, and then support for you during transition. And I'll give you a little highlight of parts of those. We are very, very proud of our engagement phase. We believe that community engagement, board engagement, uh, staff, community, parents, students, being engaged with your community and finding out who you are as a district is really first and foremost to a successful search. We do that by first engaging with you in a board planning meeting. We will interview each board member individually. We understand you are a board as a whole, but we like to talk to each board member individually and get your input in what's important in your next hire. We do individual interviews and focus groups that we set up at your request with stakeholders that you are most interested in. We will hold community forums for you, which are open forums where your general public is um, uh, contrasted to your individual focus groups or individual interviews participate. And we also have a research-based stakeholder survey. All of that information, after we've completed that, allows us to complete for you a leadership profile report, a summary of the research-based ser- survey, and a written report which will highlight the selection criteria and characteristics which most closely uh, defines and determines the qualities that match your needs as the Forest Hills Public School District. Next, please. Just a little slide on how we will facilitate your focus groups. Like many, we've learned a lot during the uh, thankfully, past COVID phase. And we, in addition to doing face-to-face meetings, have learned that we've had excellent results with focus groups that we do by Zoom and other platform um, type interviews. Face-to-face at your request, Zoom interviews, we can do a variety of locations. We can solicit input and give feedback through email. We are extremely flexible with our times and our places and how we do these focus group interviews. Possible groups that you might consider and that will, whoops, back please, that you'll consider and that um, we would talk to you about during our planning meeting would be the ones listed there. Everything from students to parents to staff to your groups and your community at large. Next, please. Additionally, we have a research-based stakeholder survey. It highlights the characteristics most desirable in a successful superintendent. And we ask your community and up to six individual disaggregated groups to respond to those. You will receive then a very extensive report, which will explain the state of your district as responded to by your different constituent groups and also the leadership profile that um, those groups are calling for. What this group, what this re- uh, report allows is for your community to also share their input. But it gives you a very quick picture, if you will, of if your groups are more aligned in their thinking or if they're more diverse in their thinking as represented by these two uh, diagrams that you see here. And we can talk about that a little bit more um, in your questions as well. Next, please. As mentioned, all of this information, the survey, the interviews, the focus groups, all feed into the creation of our leadership profile report. And as mentioned earlier, when you receive this slide deck, you can uh, click on the example link down there and actually see some of the reports we've written. But this will give you summary of the groups as well as themes that emerged across all of our data points and then um, suggestions for the most desirable characteristics in your search. Like to mention before we switch that while we do all the heavy lifting for you, we are very respectful of the fact that first and foremost, this is your search and we are here to support you, help you, and help you in your hiring. We do not hire, we do not place, we do not recommend. We bring you a slate of the best potential candidates that we think match what we've learned from this whole process. Next.
So we talked about recruiting. Um, first of all, we already mentioned we have over a hundred and thirty associates and uh, over ninety percent of those associates are uh, former, most of them are retired superintendents. H Y A has a policy where we don't like to have any sitting superintendents um, service consultants. It just could be a conflict of interest. Uh, so we kind of wait till they do retire. Um, the bulk of our, the people that are raised by school boards are recruited by H Y A associates. And you'll see on seventy-five percent of the individuals that are in place are recruited. Um, again, our website is a national advertising um, place to go with twenty-five thousand page views per month. And again, we post all the positions. We have a lot of them posted right now. And the other big presence we have, which I think separates us from other firms, is we are everywhere. Um, so we attend the National A A S A Convention. We were out in San Antonio this year. Uh, we did the job fair out there. We were at N A S B in Orlando, the National School Board Association. We had a booth out there. Uh, we work in state um, conferences as well with having a booth and recruit individuals. And then a number of our associates actually present at these national conferences and state conferences. And then we have a great uh, marketing plan that we would have set up for you uh, as well to help uh, with the recruiting. So uh, in the same line of recruitment. So this, the only purpose of this slide is to show, you know, you can't read it. Uh, but the one on the left is so all of our applicants, our, the applications come to what we call frontline. So every single associate in H Y A can see every person that applies for every H Y A position. So right off the bat, we already have twenty-two positions posted on our website. So as these people apply, every single associate will see uh, who's applied. What I do then is I look for like districts and then I will contact that associate and I'll say, let's talk about your slate. And we're gonna talk about the slate. The slate is the, the, the individuals that we uh, present to you. And then we tier it to your, to your one, two, three. So tier one is your strongest individuals that match your profile. So when I talk to the other associates, I say, I wanna talk about your tier one candidates. Any of those people match um, with the Forest Hills um, positions. So that's another way that we can recruit. The other thing is, on the right, we have a database. You can't see the number of the, the flock. But um, so we have about right now six hundred and twenty-two names of potential superintendents in our database, and they do a profile. And so we can go in there and we can uh, query, query it. So we can just say, okay, who's from Michigan? We can just click on Michigan or we can just do the Midwest. Who's a current superintendent? Who's in a large district? Who's in a district between five thousand and fifteen thousand people? So again, all that information comes back to our associates um, for our recruiting purposes, which really uh, does help as we um, contact these individuals. So this slide just represents um, again, um, some of the, this team has, these have six searches from this team in the last uh, three years, two and a half years, I guess. Um, just to give you an example of what you are looking at. So um, the Lincoln, Nebraska search, um, we had twenty-two applicants and eighteen were from out of state. Um, of the tier one, the strongest of six applicants, you can see that we had a number of different states represented. And the person who didn't get that job in Nebraska was actually from Iowa. A little in Colorado, same thing. We had seventeen out of twenty-four from out of state. You can see tier one, that was a very strong slate. And we had actually eleven in that uh, tier one. And you can see all the states represented. Person who got that job was from uh, Indiana, Aurora, Colorado. We had thirty-two applicants, uh, twenty-two were from out of state. And um, we had twelve in that tier one. So again, very strong. Now on that one, the person was actually from Colorado who got that job. And the same thing with Corona, that's in Wisconsin. That's a district of about five thousand students right next to Madison. Uh, eight of twenty-two were from out of state. And you can see the states represented in Richmond, five out of fourteen from out of state. And the person was from Minnesota who got the job. And then the last one is Whitewater, Wisconsin, where we had ten out of twenty-four from out of state. And this is a pretty common pattern. So we didn't just pull these because it looks good. This is everything our, if you take all of our searches, this is the pattern that you're going to see with the in-state, out-of-state uh, applications. So then we go on to um, the advertising piece here. So when we have that planning meeting with the board, we talk about what's the best way to advertise. Um, you're a big district. I'm assuming you're going to want to do some national advertising. And so just as a reminder, uh, within our base fee, I, uh, that does include our website, all of our social media because we're partners and I'm on the executive committee of uh, N A S S. We can also advertise for free on that website and then with our networking that we have. And then we have some other national uh, optional um, choices for you to make. And again, you select those that the board will determine, or you want other placements to go for your posting. And that's done in that planning meeting that we have with the board. And then obviously you do want to post locally as well. You want to post within the Michigan Association. And what a lot of districts will do, they'll take the neighboring states. So you would probably want to post locally, regionally, maybe Illinois, maybe Wisconsin, um, because you get a pretty good pool um, from your neighboring states as well. What this represents is next slide is again, um, we have a very strong head local department. So we can look at our searches on our website and we can see how many hits it gets, how many views it gets, how long they spend on it. And we, then we, we can also compare it to other searches that are on the website. So we can say, okay, what is your search doing versus another Michigan search that we're doing or another Midwest search that we're doing? And we can kind of see uh, track who's looking at what and what, what time of the day and what, what that use, what that is, is like as far as how much time they're actually spending on our website. I believe Pat's up on this slide.
Great. Um, this is a lot of information up to this point. So I just want to take you back to let you know kind of where we are in the process. So we work with you, we meet with you, we lay out the search, we get started with our high engagement process. We learn, we write your profile. At the same time simultaneously, we're recruiting and selecting and, and maintaining your application uh, pool and file. And then we get to what we call the selection phase. And here's how we do that. Using the information that we've learned through that whole process, we will screen every individual applicant. We will give them a Zoom in-person um, screening interview to find out if they are in fact a good fit for what we've learned about your district. From that, we will determine the best candidates and we will bring you a slate of candidates. And by the way, we will become familiar, more familiar with and work with your legal counsel throughout the process to make sure that we are adhering to Michigan open meeting, open records laws about how we conduct business as well as what we do with candidate names. You then will determine from that slate of candidates, most desirable, who you would like to interview. And then we will help you with coordinating the interview process as well as a day in the district for your finalists. And we'll share more information with you on that. Throughout this whole process, please know that you will see all of the applicant files. Anytime may interview any applicant in addition to or in place of the slate that we bring you that we believe is the best fit for your district. So it's, you really are in control of the process. We want to make sure that your needs are met. We're there to help and support as a consultant, but ultimately you have access to everything. Next slide, please. This is an example of how we um, serve you as a board by collecting input and feedback from stakeholders on your final candidate. So when we um, help you organize a day in the district on your finalists, after you've done your first round interviews, we will collect information uh, via a link in a Google Doc-type format where people can weigh in on their opinion of the candidate. They do not rate or rank or select. They give you their input on what they believe the candidate's strengths are, what their concerns might be, and what they feel that candidate brings to the district. And that's available to you, everybody's response. Next, please. This is an example also of the data that you will see. We will work with your transition team to ensure that all the members of your community do have a voice. And again, you will see how we collect people's input, how we record that for you, and how we share that with you. You may notice at the bottom that our information, our results, and also our survey is obviously available in English and in Spanish, but we also translate into other languages if that's needed as well. Back to you.
This, yeah, this next slide talks a little bit about transparency uh, for the board. And some boards don't want to see any of the applications until we bring you the slate. Other boards want, they would like to see every application as they come in. And so we can work with you either way. So if you do want to see every single application, what we have created is it's called our board portal. Again, this would be a point of pride for us. So instead of emailing board members, uh, you know, lots of emails, uh, throughout the entire search, uh, you will be, we'll, we'll create a board portal for you. And you'll, it'll be um, password protected. Every board member will have access to it. And actually, anyone the board, anyone you grant access to will also have access. So maybe the administrative assistant might need access to this as well. Maybe your communications. So whoever you say would, you would like access will have access. So in this board portal, there are six tabs up on the right. And the next slide kind of shows what we do put into those um, different tabs. But this is again, something unique. And this is um, everything that we do throughout the search will go into the board portal. And then you can kind of see, so under the home tab, we, we talk about, we do a weekly board update. We, we better Zoom links, we've got our planning meeting notes, summary notes, search timeline. And then the um, proposed, you can see the R F P, the proposal, the presentation, the contract or letter of agreement. And the engage, you're going to see the summary survey, the open-ended survey results, the district, your profile report, um, press releases, focus group schedule, uh, the recruit page, you'll see all the job postings that were, where we posted the position, all the candidate application material. So you will see every piece of application material on every single candidate with one click. So we put that one document. So if you have candidate A, you click on candidate A, you will see everything. So it's one click and you see probably up to thirty to thirty-five pages on some of these individuals as well. Uh, you'll see their resumes, you'll see uh, the slate presentation will be in there, the tier and how we tier that, one, two, three. As we move to the select phase, then we talk about the interview schedule, the day, district schedule. We always prefer to have the top two or three candidates spend one whole day in your district to really get a good handle on what's, what's going on and do a number of different meet and greets. The tier one, two, three document I talked about a little bit earlier, your S M Slater candidates. Tier one is your top, your top individual, anywhere from six to twelve. Um, we tried to help the board and narrow that down to interviewing six, no more than eight is ideal. And then tier two, it could be a strong potential candidate, but we did find something on those tier people. So whether they left their district, um, previous district and it wasn't in great terms, what was the reason why? We found something in the Google search. And then tier three people that apply are just not the right fit for your district. And we would recommend that you can, you can move any of those people around, but we put them in tier three for a reason. And we would recommend that you can, you can move any of those people around, but we put them in tier three for a reason. They didn't qualify for tier one or tier two. Then you'll have the interview questions, Google form feedbacks. And you can read, you know, a, a number of different items as well. And then the transition service, we do offer a number of things after your superintendent is hired as well as optional services. So that's all in your, your board portal, which you have access to twenty-four seven. The nice part about that portal, if you're on vacation or you're away from your, your home and you want to see if any applications came in, you've got an hour to read through them. At your leisure, you can, you can certainly go through and, and read through those anytime you want. And then this is something new too. This is included actually in the base fee. This is called a transition dashboard. This is brand new to H Y A. So what we do is we work with the superintendent you hire. We'll have a, a meeting with, with the board and/or, or the board president and the new superintendent. And we'll talk about goals, we'll talk about a hundred day plan, we'll go through that report in detail. But then we'll develop a dashboard for the new superintendent. And so you can see what this dashboard does. It talks about, you know, highlights of the district, your goals, your target goals. And then you can, we can customize it in any way we want. So if something came up in that leadership report that this person needs to work on, it can be in there with, you know, with, with, with some expectations and some goals in, in mind as well. So again, this is a very nice tool for that first year superintendent in your district. And this is included in the base price for the first year. And then if they wanted to continue something like this, again, that would be something that we could talk about for the transition phase as, as well.
I will wrap us up with the last two slides, but if I may, I'm going to highlight one more thing about that board portal. We can't emphasize this enough. One of the advantages for you as a board, in addition to having access twenty-four seven, is that all of that information is on our server. And all of the applications and applicants information, which should be confidential, is hosted and organized on our servers, which you may access. At least in our state, that gives you protection from open records requests. Because those records aren't your records, they are our records. Board members are viewing them. And we have found boards really, really appreciate that, especially in some of the complicated times we find ourselves living in. So just wanted to mention that, and that gives you added protection. You have our proposal, nothing has changed since we submitted that. We have a search fee, which includes everything that was described. We have some travel expenses if needed, and it depends how the team is going to divide up and sort of tag team the responsibilities. You have some options of additional advertising, as we talked about, that would also have an additional fee beyond what's included in ours. And we also mentioned the comprehensive background check, which is a third-party background check for executives. And usually boards do that on their final candidate. Some boards have done it on their two or three finalists. But most boards do that on their one final candidate. You can be assured that we have done our homework and due diligence in checking this person's background to the best of our ability before we even bring their name to you. So we certainly don't want to put you in an embarrassing situation, nor do we want to find ourselves there. But this allows the background check and information of things that we are not able to get into. We also, as mentioned, offer some transition services, and we can talk about that later. Our company has an analytical arm as well as a professional development section. And we can help you with transition services if that's of interest to you. Next slide, please. Please know that we offer you a client guarantee, something that we are also proud of and have found boards to really appreciate. One is that if a superintendent that we placed and you hired departs from their position during the first year, we will recruit and do an additional search for you at no cost. Or if within the first two years, if the majority of the school board is still in place and the departure is due to dissatisfaction, not necessarily personal reasons, we also will repeat the search for you. This is our stamp of confidence that we've worked with you and that we've brought you the best and we will support you in that transition. Please know that any superintendent that you hire from our pool will not be presented as a candidate to any other organizations within five years of employment. So we do not come back and, if you will, excuse the language, kind of poach our own candidates and your new hire. That's hands-off for at least five years. I believe that concludes the formal portion of our presentation. Again, I want to thank you for allowing us to be with you, especially via Zoom. I don't know if Mike shared a little personal information, but I had a knee replacement a couple of weeks ago. I'm doing extremely well, walking, bending, doing all those things. I just was a little leery about traveling at this point. So thank you. I appreciate being able to be with you by Zoom. I look forward to meeting you in person sometime.
So that does wrap up our presentation. So I know you have, I'm sure you have a number of questions. We threw a lot of information at you in thirty-five minutes. And so we just wanted to kind of give you the overview. But the one thing I will, I will end with, I guess, is we have developed and put together a great team for you. The team you see on the screen in front of you and the other two individuals that are support people are phenomenal. We will work tirelessly for you. Our communication is impeccable. We'll get back to you immediately. We're committed. I drove seven and a half hours to be with you and here in person today because we are committed to every search we do. We are committed to that district. And we want to make sure that we bring you nothing but the best candidates that beats that report. So with that, please fire away.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate you taking the time to put together such a wonderful and thorough proposal for us and for a seven and a half hour drive to get there.
Great going off Chicago.
That's not nothing. I get, just for a little bit of clarification, like when we are trying to like communicate, is it, would it be primarily with you? With Pat, was really like, who would be our primary client?
Great question. Your RFP was unique because you asked for us to give you two names of two potential lead people. Pat and I have led numerous searches. We have done numerous cool leads together as well. We always try to pick a lead person. So we always like, most of the information that we're going to have, share with the board, go to the board portal. However, we do want one board contact because sometimes we have to make a phone call. Normally, it's the board president. If the board president, because of a work situation, can't be available all the time, then the board president would appoint another board member to be that liaison person. So we, we like to get one lead person from, from the team and then one lead person from the board. And then those two do communicate more than the others would, would as well.
Okay. And one point of clarification, the, the portal that you have, I think that's really kind of very cool and unique. Nice and reclusive for all that. Is there any ability for the board members to like write comments or do anything like that? Or is it just for looking at? We would want to make sure not to do anything that violates open meetings by having any sort of collaboration.
Right. It's, it's just basically to look at and to view. We put notes in there. So we'll do like a weekly update in there. We'll just say, you know, we see fifteen applications this week or there's, there's still. So everyone applies through frontline and we can see everyone that applies and we can see when they submit and what happened. And this happens in almost every single search. People, the board panicked because, oh, there's only ten applications and it closes in, in, in three weeks or two weeks. What happens is we, you will only see them once they're completed and we download them. We will see probably fifteen or twenty in frontline that they started the application, but they did not click submit yet. The reason, in most cases, is they're waiting for updated letters of references. So they have to wait. It's beyond their control. Sometimes a week, sometimes two weeks. Once they get everything compiled, they can submit. The last three days, the search is posted, that usually blows up. Because we get them all toward, at the end. So, so that's just want to warn you about, you know, you know about that. But, but again, we put weekly updates in there and then, yeah, you will not communicate in, in the portal with the board because it could violate your, your walking corn.
Okay, thank you. So you, I, I touched on the phone a few times. It was very comforting for you to sort of validate a realization. It took us a while to come around to, but you just put it out there that we're going to close July first, twenty twenty-fourth start date. So yes, we hear we're assertive, but we have a good portion of only having to do this every seventeen or twenty years. Three of you, but we've also had people from January first in the mix or beginning of the school year. I think any of the school year, we've already covered, but just to give you a chance to say, is that your optimal recommendation to us? It's July first, twenty twenty-fourth start date? Or do you see flexibility with other ways of approaching this timeline?
There, there is flexibility, but the absolute best would be to open the search up in the early fall and get someone in place named by before January first that would start on July one. We can do whatever the board wishes, but the strongest, Serena already hit on this, the strongest pool of candidates will come with a, with a early fall posting. But again, we recruit and not a lot of good quality candidates want to leave their district in a lurch at, just before the school year starts. And you want someone who's coming from another district in good standing. Yeah, you may get someone that was bought out or actually terminated or, and it can be a good reason for that. It could be a great superintendent. But you really want someone that is coming in, in, in good standing. So the other districts, what they'll do as well, they'll post right now to see what they get and then decide after the deadline to see if it's even worth going through with the interview process or just put everything on hold and say, no, you know what? Thank you for applying, but we're going to move, we're going to wait till the fall. We already have your application. Thank you. And then, and then repost it again, early fall.
And if, if I can piggyback and just add to that a little bit, if I may, whoops. In addition to what we've said about the candidate pool, if community engagement, stakeholder engagement is important to you, it really compromises our ability to do a thorough job for you. It's the end of the school year. Our, we're assuming our ability to reach parents, students, staff in a meaningful way is really going to be rushed and hurried so that we can write that profile so that we can screen candidates for you. So it's kind of a, a double problem, a double challenge. You asked about challenges. Those would be the two challenges, the candidate pool and our ability to really do community stakeholder engagement like we'd like to.
And we really insist on meeting with students and hearing the student voice. And we actually go into the high schools. So if you did a summer search, it would be difficult. I believe you have three high schools or four high schools. And then you have alternative, you have three high schools with an alternative high school. We would like to go to talk to students in, in all of your high schools. And not just the national out-of-state students. We want a good cross-mix. We want your at-risk, special ed, bright students, co-curricular students, musicals. We, we want a good cross-mixture of in twenty twenty-five for the kids to be able to talk to in, in each high school.
And yeah, just so you know, that was one of our biggest motivations. We do have a community that will promise on the, on the study. I mean, that was July first. We say, come join the Friday and talk about our next superintendent. So yeah, that was a big motivator. And I'm saying, is there another way to do this besides rushing to fill the spot by August first? That being said, needless to say, we will have an interim. And I noticed you've recently been serving that session with tomorrow. River, if that wraps up, are you still doing that?
No, that's your third. By one semester interim, turn into five years. Yep. And, 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 and our price includes placing an interim as well. So that, that won't go up. And we will work with you higher in interim superintendent.
We are working on that, but if we get to the point that we have not found that perfect, that's good to know that we can add that.
And many times, the district design even has an interim person too, that could be someone that you might want to look at for that, that year as an interim as well.
I just have a couple of quick questions. I just want to make sure I understand your proposal. So you have a base fee, the nineteen five. And I love the fact of all the things that it includes. It's really awesome. And then a fee line to do additional advertising within the state of Michigan or outside, those are additional fees. And then a comprehensive background check. Are you doing like a regular background check? And then this one is just a more detailed, we get down to like maybe two candidates or our last one or?
This, this, this one is extremely difficult. Most districts will do it on their lone finalist. The person you really want to offer the job to, Pat mentioned, some districts will do it in the top two or three. It's very intrusive of their personal life because it, it, it covers everything. You're going to see any late mortgage payments, credit card payments, traffic violations, criminal. I mean, there, there's a list in that one slide and kind of listed, I believe. And in the proposal is more detailed of what that covers. But yeah, it's done by an actual investigation company. So it takes about ten days to get that. They'll verify the college credits, all their college degrees. It's very, very inclusive. But, but then we will do a number of different Google searches as well. And we spend a lot of time doing Google searches. And then we'll work with your HR department too. So a lot of times, you will have a, a, a Michigan State agency where you, you obviously do a background check on all your, your candidates. And then that one's probably a seven dollar, ten dollar, very cheap. You could certainly do that, do that one as well. The one that we do is really nice if someone is coming from out of state. Because we want to make sure we cover everything. The state, regional, local advertising is very, very cheap. Where it gets expensive is the national. The A S A Ed Week is, it gets a little bit expensive. But again, a district of your caliber, your size, I think it would be worth looking at something like that national advertising.
Okay. And then, and then the, for traveling, is this for traveling for, for your team? Or is this traveling services, like if we get somebody out of state that we have to bring in, that, that is additional to?
Yep, that's for our team to travel and does not succeed in the more. So what happened with COVID? So prior to COVID, we only did focus groups face-to-face. We had fifteen, twelve, twenty people, maybe that would be high numbers show up. Over hits, we went all Zoom. Focus groups went through the roof with Zoom. Thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, a hundred people through Zoom. And then, so now we do a blended model. We'll do some Zoom and we'll do some in-person. And so like Sunday night, seven o'clock, Zoom's a great one for parents. It just, it was a good time. So you'll have a high participation number, but we still like that face-to-face. So if we do somebody Zoom, that will cut back on the travel expenses and you'll know we, we get capped for travel as well. So even if we go over that, you won't see a bill. We'll, we'll eat that cost.
I've kind of a, a, a odd question. Do you, I guess you don't have any personal experience with it, which is, I don't know. Do you guys have any firm experience with a, a particular challenge? A place where you put somebody in place that seemed great to you, it seemed great to the board. And then, you know, less than a year, things kind of fell apart or, or something slipped by in the whole process that you got to learn from that. So Pat, you want to talk anything about that or Serena? But I can, I'll jump in.
Yeah, I can, I can mention one that may come up if you're Googling. I can just give you some background. I like Mike, I would say all the superintendents that I've helped the board hire or place remained in place for the, their contract and beyond, with the exception of Green Bay. And I did with another partner, did the Green Bay search a couple of years ago. And after a year, that superintendent who was from Iowa developed some health issues and actually resigned within the second year, the beginning of the second year because of some pretty severe health issues. It was understandable. It's nothing that any of us could have prevented. However, the board then in moving forward to rehire somebody made very, very strong statements in the paper that they want, they wanted to work with a search firm who would guarantee longevity of a candidate. And we all want that. That's the goal for all of us. I think perhaps it gave them a little cover with their community. But frankly, it, it wasn't an issue that we created or that we could control for. And it was very unfortunate for, for Green Bay, a large district, as well as that superintendent who, you know, really did have to resign at the, at the demand, if you will, of his physician. So you may see some different types of reporting on that. I wouldn't say it was dissatisfaction with us, but they certainly wanted a guarantee. And with that said, you know, we all want that, but frankly, only the board can guarantee, you know, by writing things into a contract that might be an incentive or, or something that would. you know, by writing things into a contract that might be an incentive or, or something that would persuade somebody to stay for longer. But no, I have not had any negative experience and the candidates I've placed to have stayed through the duration and beyond and many into their retirement. Superintendent honestly right now are being very selective, if you will. The pool is shrinking, to be very honest with you. So what we're finding is superintendents are really being selective. In the old days, it was sort of, in the old days of only five to 10 years ago, superintendents would kind of throw their name out and see what sticks. And they'd look around and they think, oh, I might move, I might not, not so much anymore. Superintendents are being very selective. They're, they're looking at districts they are highly interested in and very serious about the position. So I think we've got a, a more specific pool, if you will. And that may be one of the factors of why superintendents stay. They're very, very interested in the district. It's not a stepping stone, for example.
It's all about the right fit and that's why we just, um, collaborative or the girl job, putting that leadership report together because the candidates are going to research a district as well. It's not just about you giving them, they're going to actually take a lot of time to go through and, and figure out what this district's about. So it has to be that, that right fit. The better fit you find, the longer they can stay. And I'll say this, as long as the board is doing their board governance and, and is a very professional board and, and allows a superintendent to do their his or her job, that's going to happen, it's going to stay longer as well. You know what's in the papers today and, and it's, it's in out there on social media. There's a lot of boards that are in this survey right now. And it has, that's why some superintendents are leaving.
Okay, I have a silly question. In the personnel area of your proposal, you were described as an innovative leader and a visionary. Does that respect your title as a superintendent, your title like each one, eight or both? Like what does that mean?
I hope it's bold. At first when that, that was written in my file. So that was really meant as a superintendent did a lot of nice things and I was awarded the national superintendent here in two thousand and twelve, I think it was. For doing some of those things that we did, but it's all about the team, hire the right team. It wa, it wasn't about me, it was hiring the right team, get the right people in place. We did a lot of professional staff development, passed a lot of rep norms, built the culture, got the community, took over a job where the community wasn't supportive. At the end, they were so supportive and it was just, again, everyone working together with H Y A. Started taking some of those things, developed things that, that are making our searches better. I was probably one of the first associates to have an administrative assistant. And, and, and Michelle manages our portal. So she, she, she spends a lot of time on the portal. So just those kinds of things, she spends a lot of time putting this presentation together. You ever see a, a, a former superintendent try to do a nice power coin by him or herself? It wouldn't look like this. Okay, so you have to have the right people who know what they're doing. And so those are some of the things that we do to try to make our, our things more professional. It, 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 it does, it makes a big difference.
Hello. Yep, okay, we're good then. So thank you very much for driving all the way here, for zooming in with us from your different locations. I hope you're feeling, feeling well.
Very good.
We, we, we appreciate all of the time that you put into this. As a board, we are missing two people, so we want to be able to fill them in on what we, we heard today. And we'll be discussing this at our next meeting, which is on June fifth.
Okay.
A public meeting and so we will be able to get in contact with you.
Thank you so much, Pat or Serena, any closing comments?
Just one quick one, if I may, thank you as well. Great meeting you even this way. Please know that we will continue to support you whether we are the chosen firm or not. We have a very extensive network. And so if and when your position is ready and posted, and even if it's not us, we will be advertising for you and sending out the word that your position is open. We want good superintendents serving kids. So we, we'll help you with that step of the way as well. So good luck to you in any direction.
I just was going to say thank you for allowing me to come in virtually and it's nice to meet you this way. And hopefully I'll get a chance to meet you all in person. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Five minutes or so break here before we move on to our next portion of the day. Very good. We, we appreciate all of the time that you put into this. As a board, we are missing people, we want to be able to fill them in on what we, we heard today. And we'll be discussing this at our next meeting, which is on June fifth. A public meeting and so we will be able to get in contact with you.
Perfect, so thank you so much, Pat or Serena, any closing comments?
Just one quick one, if I may, thank you as well. Great meeting you even this way. Please know that we will continue to support you whether we are the chosen firm or not. We have a very extensive network. And so if and when your position is ready and posted and if it's not us, we will be advertising for you and sending out the word that your position is open. We want to, to bring them serving kids. So it will help you in that step of the way as well. Good luck to you in any of that. My question would be taken up by you coming in virtually and it's nice to meet you, say hello to you guys. Be well and good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Yeah, I love that. I've already been spent.
Yeah, that's what we do. Yeah, we're making them anymore. I don't know. I don't know that they're.
Cause we didn't know.
We're moving there about this size, they're coming back at four.
Yeah. Generally, we've been talking about them.
I know, I, I have had it more than. Okay.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
But that worked, it worked out really well. We have to promote to the end of it, put that there as well.
Don't judge me.
I don't judge me.
I want, I want.
Concerts here, there, whole fires. Two minutes to go, bud.
Yeah. Well, we all took three, you're good. Hold on, I'm going to take a water too. Oh, really? Yeah.
I have to edit, you know, craft, I said, I, I still have my craft.
You might have to pour back out.
I'm going to have to, yeah. I was kind of like.
I judge. Chocolate, I was drinking some and then I drank like crazy. I judged my drink. He just makes the friends like, oh no, I'll bend it. And then afterwards, I think he suffered me, yeah, hold on.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. Can't wait to see.
I got baseball back to my very. The last. Which is actually a topic. And I've got a little bit of progress, but it's been a very fast. Now it's, you know, it's just going to squeeze back around. We have a whole.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have to go. Something to buy myself and then.
Yeah. That's not even fair.
I'm a little bit better. It's not.
What did you say? It's nice. Somebody else said, oh, that's what they're doing.
I'm sitting here doing my world, I just want to stop and get up. I haven't got, I got tunneling off. Totally done. There's three of us, I don't think you need to.
I know, one is called rescue and then someone is still being saved. And I don't give you, and then you're struggling and I'm kidding.
I'm saying. I need my three starting words to get any.
I, I need royal, yeah, they did that. And then it's really quite high. I was invited by a client. I wrote that. I want to buy it. I know it's hard. I know it's hard.
I mean, yeah, this is.
Well, you know what?
I, I've already worn. Yeah, I'm down against the game. You want to hit your number, please. You might score a few letters.
So do I.
No, I just, it's, it's not a better, I'm going to lose today because I've downed my last one and I already kind of screwed up. I didn't go to.
Why don't you just say one word?
Oh, pretty cool.
You can do for a few letters.
Well, that narrows it down.
No, look at your, no, look at your. Right.
I just put letters in place.
So make something like where can it be? No, 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 no.
Well, no, I actually, I play for.
Yeah.
I'm a, I'm a lady.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
That's what I need.
Yeah, I just grew up, I just grew up. Yeah, yeah, I, I gotta see it all.
Do you need three vowels to get rid of? I think, I think there's a lot of vowels.
And then I do, I do, I just use it and I use the one. I go, but I don't like them to be double-typed.
I don't have to be so mean to them.
I got all the letters.
The worst in how moral works, where we use three bars, like one, three same letters, like how does that move?
Wow.
You know, two letters, like it usually makes you look like three is the same word, the same letters.
I'm very loud.
Yeah.
Did Maggie leave?
I don't know. That's the worst.
All right, so she's done.
I'm scrambled now.
And I guess.
My mom was good. Yeah.
For what? Well, we, we got to, yeah, we got to redo something and then we're going to close, yeah.
I know.
That feels to be a weird front. Yeah. Yeah. Words you don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, tell me then, we'll get something.
Tomorrow.
I got it.
Yeah. Well. Northern, northern high, fourteen, northern trail. Bottom video.
Oh, I got connected to full mine. Tell me if you can call us a column. And then northern, eight, nine.
All your, all your.
Everyone, oh, yeah, you know.
Okay. So. I was pointing to everything from the earlier part of our meeting hours ago. We, um, we, we have to actually stop.
Mike.
And you know, I. I saw, I was doing, I was, um, for the test I have been for, that is a resolution that we have to adapt. So we cannot separate that with separate pieces, although your, what, what, you were concerned about your vote, you'll reflect it in a minute, but we have to actually have both on singular resolution that we have adapted. So we're, we're looking for a motion to adapt to the resolution. And that, you know, we've gotten things, people have gotten a lot back. And that means that we do, by moving that we assume there is a resolution, or even that Maggie is a ready one, for her vote, and how we are all that, and the vote we are expecting is for Andrea, Kato, and what you sell. It's coming.
Right, right.
Okay. All, all the paper, they say aye. Aye. And opposed. Okay. Thank you very much. The review. Uh, we are up to public comment. Correct. See, yes. It's on there. We have. I believe four votes. Oh. Right. We four votes recorded for, in terms of your own accord. Listen, I'll put it to you, like, your record of seeing the post ability, maybe specifically is already recorded, and that's in the, you know, in the earlier portion of the time. It's comfortable, fully, somebody has a board on that, and sometimes you do have to. Have it be done today, because at the time, like, the votes were, it's, it's, it's done by twenty six, forty, on Friday, but we don't have another meeting. Who would have been. Lots. But we don't expect. They can't. And. Well, no, no, just in the, the team name, that we go forward, is reflected. And it. And this would be just, it's one thing, if I had powers, that, as a group, towards it.
It's really funny, you just don't have to.
Right.
Effectively, you have all together. I guess, you're not, you're, 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 one person, you're not, you're not. Strong enough that you can have it. Like.
But thank you, it's still the one person that has to. That, that's nothing with the resolution. We're lucky enough to have you. Um. So that's. We should vote, what we. The fact that they're on the. They're talking about. They're. That's what we like. Yeah.
Well, just, 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 you know, you have next week.
Um, it's different, because, like, we initially, um, we separated out the most, so that we definitely did, we were two records and two awards, and then the separate most, and I just, I don't know, for the day, to vote on how it's changed separately, and so we did a most, we told, if the who was on the separate most for, but we have only got this record, so that's, I wrote back, and it's.
And the five voters that have four, and, uh.
Correct.
Because.
And it really.
So that.
Correct.
And we. Then, so that's. But you, 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 you adjust your, what you, what you're in the computer, uh, the vote on behalf of the, of the final vote on day. And then.
And then we voted on two of those, so we voted four, I got to know, I know, one vote.
Okay.
So now, uh, without Maggie, there, there are three one votes. On whether we need the whole. Um, and I know one of, uh, Howie's, he's done, he's, uh, and that's you much, really, that will help. Is, uh, one of the people that we had before, decided to take forward, vote for, was, you know, two times, having a vote for. Uh, do you have any experience with her, or can you turn to a whole tour that you might be able to say something to Howie about issues? That sounds, something about it, about.
Yeah, I, I know her a lot. She's turned on next time I see her. Second. There's mine, I have ten years, or four, uh, and, uh, and support. Uh, she's active, uh, number of the ten I M B board, of what they're active. Ten, in the, in the, in the support. Uh, it's kind of a promoter of the, uh, ten year technical center. Uh, maybe for, uh, uh, some, uh, for ten, uh, that, uh, I M B are operated on behalf of two, or more, uh, there's a vote. Uh, has that very much of I T R to multiple things. In fact, of the I M B board, to come here, to mean that I would say, over my seventeen years that I was working. And I think that's, that's, that's active and, uh, uh, and most of you. Uh, as the next number, that has this, uh, uh, I guess, uh, this, uh, uh. I know it, it is worth it. There's one, there's a special, uh, good question.
Do you have any, or this is a question, this is a question. Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, it's really down to you, if you don't do it, or I don't think, I like yours.
I don't.
You understand, I'm.
Still, first, there, and, and I don't necessarily want to force you to make things for a previous day, but just to frame in the right, that's what's good. You know, and for options to hurt, to move so strong, like, yeah.
Well.
Far as I can, I'm.
I was just thinking that, I, I was thinking first, that at the time, maybe I was, exactly, so, they're actually, they're all, um, that's what I didn't do it. And, you know, I'm, I'm part of, being that, and, and a little bit, um, I, I just, but, uh, you know, I just wanted to say that I'm not, you know. I want to say my conscience, um, and, you know.
To, I just, I'm, 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 I'm sure, I'm, so, we vote for more. For the four, one, we, we, to, 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 uh, to vote for the, why does that happen?